It discussed the workshop. I'll just read it. We have a workshop scheduled for November 8th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to know if you or the board have some direct questions or information that I can gather for the meeting prior to it. I'm unsure of the direction of the meeting and would like to have information available for it. During the VOC meeting on October 4th, our board chair Bob was/ felt personally attacked by Ted. And Ted walked out during the discussion. Ted mentioned misuse of funds. And we're unaware of where this is coming from and would like to know if you know what he is referring to. Anything to help shed some light on the subject would be great. Thank you so much. So first of all, it bothered me that you felt like you were attacked. Again, nobody's trying to attack you. In fact, I want to work with you.
And I'll explain what the words were that got me when you were there.
And again, I want to work. My goal here is to see a thriving fair in our county benefit program. That's what I want to see.
That's all of our goals. That's why we volunteer all of our time. And you know, we have countless hours. I've only been on the board for 10 months. But I mean, we only have the citizens of Crewe County at heart, so.
And so do I. So do I. So I want to clarify Ted's role, okay? So Ted has a really difficult job because Ted has to deliver a lot of bad news. Ted has to do a lot of, have a lot of uncomfortable conversations with people as well. But at the end of the day, I'm responsible for this county. So is he, and so is she. And when something fails, it's our fault. When something is missed, it's our fault. I take full responsibility for that. And Ted, when he goes out and he has questions and he has hard conversations, he's doing that in our direction. And a lot of times, people kill the messenger. But I just want to say, when it comes to Ted, if Ted is doing something, saying something, it's not Ted. He's doing it in our direction. So if something like that should happen in the future, come and see me. Come and talk to me.
You would like to know what the comment was?
I would.
The problem was is that we were having this conversation. First, I was just here to watch the look, wasn't prepared to have to say anything and then do that. But in trying to express the passion that being volunteers and what we're trying to do, that we would be willing to do anything that needs to be done to like Ted, room, paintbrush, whatever. So part of the conversation was, we were talking about, we had even, I was even so far as to willing to have the discussion about volunteering to, it was to be like a project manager to go measure how much this guy painted. It was no structural. And then the structural engineer was going to come by afterwards and do the work. So all we were doing is measuring, you painted 20 by 20 feet. Okay, you did 400 square feet worth of work. But it was only a discussion and I was only talking about, I would be willing to do that. Problem occurred is when he jumped up, pointed his finger and accused me of putting the fairgrounds and the county in liability and jeopardy. Because it was like I had already done this. It was just a discussion. And it got into the paper that it said that I am project manager. No, it was the discussion of willing to save money. And it's, well, maybe we should go ahead and spend $70,000 to do it. So and then the comments that was in there also, that was the thing that really got me because that felt like, you didn't hear what I said. I said, we were willing to do something. We're not, we haven't done, we didn't even have the RFP in place yet to do this. So it'd be careful. And then it's also just kind of just concerning when you hear stuff, well, maybe we should take that money away from them. So that was upsetting. But the thing that really bothered me to say is that a volunteer was personally attacked by county representatives. So this is, are you taking us on that? Yeah, but it wasn't. And I know it was a rough day it was going on. I was out here listening to what's happening and do that. I mean, the windmill ends with that thing. But listen carefully to think because that actually can, you know, I would think being slanderous, libelous, if you make some false accusations like that. It's like, I didn't put the county in jeopardy. Didn't make a decision. Didn't do anything. I'm willing to help whatever it takes to get it done and save money. As long as it's within the rules. That's where we're all here. We're all here about being open and rules we have already. And when we post our meetings all the time, we use the forums, which gets about 5,000 people on those forums. So we get a lot of information out there when people want to hear about what we're doing. But that was my main concern and that's what really bothered me.
Well, and it is about following the rules, following the law, following the rules. And I know that I said that on day one when I took office here. That was absolutely my priority was to follow. In fact, I said, we're going to follow the law and we're definitely going to follow the rules. And I appreciate that, Bob. And I think that Ted had, Ted did have some information that was leading him to have that opinion. And some of that stuff we'll discuss in our next topic. But then there was another email that I got later in the day. This one, this one really bothered me. So I got, I got an email. We were contacted by the Washington County Attorney. And he's their county council. And he sent me, and he sent Ted, and I don't know if you guys got it or not. But he sent an email which basically said that you had reached out to him. And he didn't understand what was going on, that you, it says, hello, Mr. Anderson. I was given your name as a reference with issues pertaining, or issues between the Fair Board and county offices. Chris Brosey, our current Fair Manager, saw you at the Spring OFA meeting. And you were referred as a go-to this last OFA. I was hoping you'd be willing to discuss the matter and hopefully point in the right direction. Even though ORS statutes and our MOU states our authority, someone is making a push. It does not. Much appreciated. Bob Chavante, Crewe County Fair Chair. So that county council was concerned about why that would be happening.
Because we attend, we're a member of OFA, our manager and Chris tend to do a meeting. The spring meeting, when it came up, discussion, because all our rules for fair, for our roles and everything is under 565. It made it everything you need to know about the role of the Fair Board is there and the authorities. And he was said, if there was any time that you needed a discussion with clarification with the, with the Board of Commissioners and understanding that ORS statute regarding the fair and fair board, they're to help. Then it was brought up again at the flat soil committee meeting and we remember Leah mentioned the same thing and says, and then if you have any questions, because we're not the only county that has Fair Boards and Commissioners. Because guys are coming around all the time. So everyone's relearning stuff that's already been decided before. So it was about to reach out, let us know what would happen. The thing was to reach out, let us know what is that we can do. Because we don't have any representation to do that, to get it done, when we're asking what's happening. So it's just to get clarification, are we reading 565 correctly with the consultation bill? They both said, he said and she said, that they're the experts on helping and understanding how the statute works. That's what it was about. It was about, where do we go to get information? The next, we would go to the Attorney General's office to get information?
We have a lawyer right here.
Yeah, but the thing of it is, is that's what it said from OFA to get it done. And the thing of it is, is that we do have a lawyer down here and I respect the fact that he has work to do and to get it done. But it's also getting, get the feeling that not really buying our authority under 565. And it says about, we have the rights that we do to manage that facilities, finances, buildings, management, everything. And it's all there. So it didn't seem, so we're just trying to get away. So we're prepared. So we understand what somebody who said they were an expert on.
Right.
On that. And that's a, and it's public law. And I, you know, it's like, where do you go to somebody who's had a lot of public law experience?
When was the meeting open?
October 24th.
Did you happen to speak to this person?
We did. Yeah, so we talked to him. And his concern was that Bob was trying to go around Ted and try to use him against Ted, which is why he reached out to us.
That was not the thing. They wanted to get information.
You see how that might look out.
I think it would, I think it would be fair to say that based on that email because it said that they were reaching out because they felt that someone was making up. What was the word? Making a push or making a, let me see, the specific language was a push. Okay. So that is a little bit different than, that is a little bit different than your description of what actually happened in the meeting. Because I think that went out right after that because I didn't have any other contact with you, I don't think.
If our, the statute says that we have the right to make purchases, make contracts and manage those facilities. And you're doing that and somebody else says, yeah, no, that's, we're going to, we're going to put a hold on this. But it also says within county policy and procedures.
And we are a parliament.
And we are.
So when it's, so Bob, are you saying that the Board of Commissioners does not have the right to question whether or not county policies and procedures are being utilized?
I'm saying one employee probably should not have the right to stop the legal authority of the governing board to make its purchase decision. If there's questions to ask, you want to come and ask. You had a problem, make a phone call, ask.
So if something looks like it's in violation of those things?
What's, I, and I get stuff that I want to know, it's like, what is in violation? What are we, I mean, and I, I had no idea about that email. So thanks for bringing it up. I feel like we as a board need to discuss those things. I was going to be emailing other places, you know, and I'm sorry, Bob, I'm just, you know.
So are you saying that that email wasn't sent as board action?
I don't, I don't know about that email, no.
Well, let's move on because.
Anyway, so that's the second way. What you're saying is there's, I can, I.
I think we'll get into that during.
Yeah, so I have some of those things that I want to ask questions about because I don't understand them. And then I think as we break those down, maybe they'll make sense to everyone. But there's another thing that was brought to my attention. And this is particularly concerning because like I said, I want to see a thriving fair. I want to see us working together. I want to see us utilizing and sharing resources. But there's a, if there's a maintenance issue there, or there's a need for a tractor, or there's a need for some county equipment, we want to contribute to that. We want to, we want to help and see that place thrive. And I want to have a good working relationship. And again, I felt, I felt a little bit, how should I say, undermined a little bit by that email, but again.
I apologize for that if you felt undermined, but that was not the intent. The intent was, where do we gather information that we have?
So the next thing that happened, and this is particularly concerning, was I had a county employee come to me and say that they got a disturbing text message from you. And the message says, and it's from you and to the county employee. And it says, oh my God, just left a board meeting. Jay and Ted showed up. The AI stuff came up. Ted thinks that would be a good, a great tool that could partner with economic development with, oh, I don't trust snakes. So I don't know if you're referring to just Ted or Ted and Jay as snakes, but that bothers me.
I don't remember how you got, got in there, but that was, my whole thing was about.
Can you, could you give these to them? I got a couple copies more.
I think what you're reading.
It's fine to do that, but.
Can I get a copy?
Yeah, here you go. I got one more. So then it says, they did for what? I thought there was a workshop soon. No idea if they were going to show up, but it was full of hopeful insights. No one trusts them. Ted was the good old, I'm here to help you, boy. I want us to work together, bar for Obama. So, and.
Let's clarify, there was some tension at the meeting too. And it was also being.
I didn't feel that kind of tension. I didn't feel that kind of tension, Bob.
At our meeting?
Oh, you weren't at the meeting.
You weren't at our.
Oh, I, I, I thought the meeting that.
This was, this was our meeting and it was just.
You mean, you're referring to, just to clarify for the people watching, you're referring to the meeting that Jay and Ted attended at the fair.
First Fair Board meeting.
Okay, yeah, please.
I have no problem with Ted to do that. I mean, it was just, there was, there were just things that was going on and that they were trying to help. As far as not trusting, there's a lot of people in this county have a problem. More not trusting what county commissioners in general do than they have with the fair board. And so that's the thing. But there were some exchanges that were pretty bad to do that. And it's like, and then the thing was, is like, okay, he was trying to help and being nice. And it, it felt to me like an inquisition was going on.
Okay.
Didn't feel like a cooperation because it was challenging the stuff they had. We're not even trying to stuff, we're not even trying to get stuff. That's what it felt.
Hold on, I was there. So, and I didn't have a whole lot to say. But during that interaction, my view, and there might be somebody here who was there, but Ted was trying to assist with some information.
They couldn't get their RFP to tear down the stables. So I had some, I had some suggestions to do it more cheaply. Do you remember that?
With the road department.
Remember that? Okay.
And I don't know the road department, it's in their scope to do that.
Well, anyways, I thought it was, I thought it was very cooperative.
That's what the truck was about too, so.
You thought what?
And I guess that maybe we can stop with all of, you know, the directing towards Bob. And maybe you can just apologize if we can move forward more, what we can move forward with.
But that was still.
Because I just, I feel like it's just, it is kind of an attack. He's attacking, you're attacking. So no, everybody's upset. We're just trying to.
And I, and I appreciate that. And like I said at the beginning, nobody's trying to attack anybody, but.
But bringing that out, I feel like that could have been something that could have been talked with him, like on a personal level.
So I would, so like, I would, I would love to have that conversation on a personal level. But when I read that, I'm kind of concerned to have that conversation on a personal level. It's concerning.
The one thing that I'm, I'm going to stuck with this, but concerned about is that it says here, no one trusts them. And so if I'm your liaison and I've come to your meeting, and this is the consensus after one meeting where.
But and if no one to him, is that not all of us?
Well, that's what it's referring to.
And that's, and that's actually why, that's actually why I wouldn't, I would probably want to not bring that to him individually. Because I needed to know where the, where the Fair Board stood because that is a condemnation of apparently the entire commission. So I need to know for that.
Hopefully you just come out and ask that question and sort of.
I mean, that could have been asked, I don't know, to me, to me, whatever. Sorry, it's not like you can, but one, I was still fresh off the personal attack that I was made when I was here to do this. The comments that were made. Also, there's been some comments that we watched on the public, even though we're not here receiving, that there's question, there was a question, you made a comment, you want, not saying that was nefarious or anything, but who owns, what ownership? And then his comment about my decision, maybe we should just take the money away from them. Well, there's over the two attempts to take away money from us.
Bob, I'm not trying to take any of your money.
No, no, not you. I'm just saying that Ted's comment was to take that, maybe we should take that money away from them.
I know.
That's probably a reference. You can see that, but I mean.
Well, I want to make my position really, really clear about the money. I'm going to do, I'm going to do what the taxpayers, what, whatever. In fact, what did I do? I made a movement to revert it back.
Exactly. I should say me. Actually, I think that was my, I think that was my suggestion.
But nonetheless, nonetheless, this isn't about, this isn't, I don't want to redistribute money or anything.
I do feel it's necessary to rewind just for, for people who are new. When I first came on, the biggest topic on the shelf was they wanted to redo the money in the ordinance. Do you remember this?
Yeah.
And I put a stop to that when I went through and read it.
Right.
So to say that number one, that action led to low levels of trust is, is, is.
I didn't see there was a low level.
So the thing of it is.
Well, and obviously, Bob.
Right. I, I think that. I mean, I wrote it, no discuss, no problem with it. But the thing of it is, is like Ted, still getting over the irritation. Or respect what you three guys have done and what we did. I get that. Okay? And excuse me for still being a little hot after being mistreated, as far as my feeling. But the thing of it is, is about the trust issue. That was our number one issue when people, because people are coming saying, you know, hey, did you watch that meeting? Sounds like, you know, they're trying to take funds away. I mean, this was other people coming up and talking to them about things. That's what it is. So that's what everyone is. The board, I don't know, I wasn't speaking for the board. I was just myself. I was thinking, wrong, should I have said it? No, just. That's the way it is. But like I said, that's not the intent. That's not the feeling, my feeling of the board at all.
And I'm going to agree with you on trust issues with the Board of Commissioners. That's why I ran for office. That's why I ran for office, right?
I know you did. I know you did.
And I'm working hard, we're working hard, to change the culture here.
Right.
In, not in, in the county in general, but at this table, right? And so it's extremely important to me to be transparent, as transparent as I can be. And I will continue to do that. Done it all year. I will continue to do that. I will bring every issue that is out there to the public. And I will, and I will continue to do that.
And you just have to, I mean, the whole thing is, is not necessary to understand what's going on. Is that the citizens just have, I mean, they have a distrust of everybody in the thing to do that. But that's where they're coming up and they're saying, hey, what are they trying to do? What are you trying, you can't say much. They don't have, they don't have the belief and they need to see it. And what you do here today, or what you do here down the road to do that, that's going to go a long way. Just because people don't show up doesn't mean they don't watch or don't watch the stuff on the recording.
Oh, I talk to people every day, Bob. They show up.
So I respect the Board of Commissioners without one thing. I know your job is not an easy job to have, to do to get it done. But the same token, I'm very passionate about the fairgrounds and what it means to this entire county and where it can go. And to see or have, to get the sense, right or wrong, that it's being pushed off track or being removed or maneuvered around. Okay, I might be a little possessive, but that's my opinion.
Okay. So maybe it'd be a good time to move forward then.
I just want to chime in real quick. So, you know, what I see is you, as a board, not one commissioner can do anything. You've got, everybody knows that. We have to make a decision as a board. So you, as a board, the same way.
Right.
So please don't, you know, don't reach out as one, as the chairman of the board and, and the emails or text messages speaking for your board. I mean, you've got to, you've got to use your board like we do to, you got to be in agreement. I mean, you, you've got to, you've got to use your board like we do to, you gotta be in agreement, at least two of you, or, or, you got a five-member board, or?
Seven, or seven.
Seven members, so you, you gotta have, you gotta have four people, right? If it's a seven-member board, you gotta have four out of that, right? So, um.
However, you can still lock research information to bring to the board before you make decisions. And it was a research to see by somebody who, according to OFA, was an expert on that thing, to make sure that we are standing on our feet, that we are following Oregon law to do that.
But I'm just, I'm just thinking about, as, as a commi- as this board of commissioners.
Yes.
We would say, you know, we'd go through Ted and he can, he can talk to the other two. I would say, Ted, this is, can we, can you talk to him about this? And, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't send an email to another county council, you know what I mean?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't the fact that it was county council, it's that we were told that he's an expert on fairs. So we're seeking information to bring to the board.
So, I, I think. But I mean, I'm just saying, get your board's cons- consensus with, with, what's your, what's your want to, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, no, I get that before you do anything to do that, but if you had.
I mean, Katie actually said, I, I didn't know.
Well, it's the thing of it is, is if you had a project or something that you need to do, would you ask everybody before your research, try to bring in the information, or are you trying to bring in the information? Well, it wasn't, well, I'm not making.
I got this, okay.
It was about gathering information to make sure when I'm talking to the board, I'm not talking like an idiot, that I'm reading this correctly and can you help out, or am I, or, am we, are we wrong? Am I wrong? Okay? Then I can, I can absorb that, but it's my duty to have be properly educated when I bring a material up to the board.
Just one, I got one more thing. We gotta have a way to communicate this board with your board in a way that's maybe more efficient or something.
Well, that's.
And hopefully then we kind of.
Well, and that's, that's what we're talking.
The liaison, the, the, the hat, cause he's there, you can do that, you get it done, and it's a, and it's a focus and you'll find out what's happening. All that stuff is very public and having the, you got a question about one, or you got a question? Call up, we ain't giving you information, there's nothing being hidden in there.
And this is a workshop, so no decisions are made in the workshop.
Correct.
And, um, and, and this is, as we navigate through, uh, some of the things that I've found, uh, questions I have, as we navigate through that, maybe that'll help us find the answer of how we're gonna, um, how we're gonna do that communication. So, if there's no more discussion on this particular area, maybe it's a good time to move on. Can we agree on that?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any discussion on that?
Jay, you're good? Yeah. Ted?
Fine with me.
So, to be is compliance with county policy.
So, compliance with county policy. So, I have the MOU here, and I'm gonna reference page three of the MOU. Let me see if I can get this up here. So, um, page three of the MOU, under understanding, uh, number four, it says, the Curry County Personnel Rules and Related Policies and Procedures Buying Fair Employees, Except As Superseded By The Collective Bargaining Agreement For Affected Employees. So, my interpretation of that, and I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, is that fair employees follow county policy. We in agreeance with that? Yes?
And we're not fair employees.
No, you're not fair employees, but.
Just to make that clear.
But, but, so, let's clarify that. So, when a decision is made to make a purchase of a piece of equipment, or to enter into a lease, or to, um, to buy supplies, or to distribute money, is that person who makes that decision bound by county policy?
Well, we, I was saying, yes.
Actually, under number eight, under number eight, that's it, that says, the fair board has authority to make expenditures from the fair funds. The fair board shall comply with county purchasing laws and state contracting statutes, like I said last night.
Right.
So that's what, that's that issue.
And like, you know, we do the big effort to.
Right, 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 right.
Paying free different.
We have the same rules, is what I'm trying to say, right?
Right.
So we all have the same rules. Okay. So I just, I wanna clarify that before we move into the first, uh, uh, topic, which is the Business Oregon Grant. Do you guys have that grant there, in front of you? So that grant, um. I'm gonna pull that grant up here. Bear with me. Okay. So, uh, I don't remember, I don't remember much about this grant, so.
It was written by our previous, uh, fair manager.
Okay.
The, the previous fair manager had attended a class of training that was scholarshiped in to learn about grant writing, which is one of the responsibilities about the fair board to try to find funds to do this. And as part of that class and training, she did what the contact with Business Oregon spoke to her, and with them, they developed, this was a great opportunity for us to do that, and with the R P E C park, which was a perfect fit for.
Okay. So, we were notified of this grant, I was notified of this grant when, um, and I think Ted was as well, uh, when we got an email that said, uh, I immediately noticed, uh, this grant was written to Curry County, not the fair. And, um, and then there was, uh, this was further looked at, and, uh, well, I, I'll just, I'll just read this email. I immediately noticed the grant is written to Curry County, not the fair. That made me curious, because this whole time I was told the fairgrounds was a specific nonprofit like, uh, Curry Fair and Friends. So I did a general search on the IRS website, and there is no fairgrounds listed, nor on the state SOS website. So, that would lead me to believe that they are still a county department, and, and that's why Bob's having a fit. He didn't want us to find out this entire time that they have been doing DBA Curry County Fairgrounds Event Center as a county entity.
Who, Bob, who, me?
Uh-huh.
Uh, that's interesting. That wouldn't be me.
So, uh, so I, I guess my first question is, um, did anyone at the county approve applying for this grant?
First I heard of it was that email you just read.
Right.
I didn't write that email, that's what, that's what.
I don't know about that, where it says that either, cause I like to know, I got this, there's no problem with what's going on.
Can the commissioners tell us who wrote that email?
Um.
Yeah, it's public.
Public information? So that email came from Miranda Plagie.
Economic development?
Economic development.
Charge.
Yeah, I know who she is.
But we're seeing grants.
Yeah.
Then she was con- so she was concerned about it, sent the email.
Okay, well, first of all, it was not distinction, there's no part of distinction. There were many claims.
Okay. So this is a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollar grant.
Correct.
And, um, and my question is, uh, did the county approve applying for the grant? And did the county approve receiving the grant?
Our understanding was that from the, the manage, the manager, when she put this together, was part of the class, filed for it, and then we were told we had got it, and it was the implementation. A mistake maybe not reading that first page of state put out there to do that.
Was that when Schmelzer happened?
No, no.
No, this just, this just happened.
No, this, yeah, this is all recent stuff.
Yeah, this was a couple of years ago.
Well, I think, I believe that Chris Brozzi signed it, signed the grant as, as the fair board chair, that's what it looks like to me.
Right.
But, I mean, the issue is that, is that the, it was applied for as, as the gra- as the, I mean, it was applied for under the name of Curry County. And so, but Curry County wasn't consulted about it. So, those are issues that, that may, I mean, that's, so it's a problem.
So this is one of those examples, right? So you ask, so, here's the thing. So the county cannot apply nor receive for a grant without the board of commissioners approving, because you have to be able to see the terms of the grant. This, this grant is between the state of Oregon, Oregon Business Development Department and Curry County. So a grant was applied on behalf of Curry County without any authorization or approvals.
That I could.
Or aware, that you even just noticed.
Yeah, so we had, had based it out, you know, it was tied on, and our, our understanding was it was for the fair ground, for the, and the RV park was exactly what it was made for. As far as those claims about being a nonprofit, I would be an idiot to say that, because that's ridiculous. I know it's not a nonprofit.
Okay, so, just.
But, I see your, your concern about that.
So.
I, yeah, yeah.
And, and again.
Now I'm concerned, cause we got work out based on that.
Right. And again, going back to my responsibility to, uh, safeguarding and overseeing tax grant money. Um, I'm looking at the grant, and on page eleven of the grant, it says that ba- basically ca- under capital improvements do, does not include maintenance and repairs, supplies and equipment, furnishings, et cetera. Uh, provides a little more detail, but if this grant was used for some of those things, then we would get in trouble on that grant. And then, if that were to happen, then we would have to pay the money back.
Right.
We would have to pay interest, and it would affect any future or current, or other current, uh, grants that we had with, with Business Oregon.
Well, based on.
That's very concerning.
Right, well, based on discussions with the architect and engineer that were dealing with the RV park, we, we haven't received any of those funds yet, and.
Right.
Those funds are gonna go to ream- to pay for all those, the, 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 the design, the layout, that, and then start dropping the groundwork, but that is.
Right, and, and I'm not.
That's all going for that. But I see your point.
Certainly, and I, and I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm not arguing whether you should apply or not apply for this grant. I'm just arguing that proper protocols weren't followed to ensure oversight over tax grant money.
Well, I think that was probably the problem of trust, that it was, it was a mistake that was understood that it was supposed to be.
Well, Bob.
The fair ground.
The problem with trust at this point now.
Yeah.
Lies with you and the fair board.
That's what we're saying, we didn't know that, we, we were told that this is for the fair grounds and that, that pays, I get it. But still, when I'm doing anything that's neglectful, it's for the RV parks.
If you're just reading it up here, I mean, you'd have to read the entire thing.
Yeah.
That says, state of Oregon counties are drunk capital improvements grant agreement.
So, that's what I was.
Right, but, but the recipient is Curry County.
Right.
So that was a misreading on that one.
I don't, well, it's not misunderstood by the state.
No, I get that, I'm just saying, it's like she said, we read the top page and it says there, we were told this is what it's about, this is what it's for, it's all going for that. And I think we haven't even had a dime from it yet. We have, we have to get that percentage of the groundwork done before we can receive any of that funding to do that. And that's what it's for, and it's not gonna be for me. It is, that is our number one project to get done, it's the value that it brings to what we get done, so we can have an income that we can use for those other things.
So, we're, we're in the, I'm just wondering, where, where in the grant?
I hear ya.
Where in the grant does it say what it's for? I'm just.
It's right in the top page, the title, Curry County Fairgrounds, RV Park.
Project name, recreational.
And so, and, and so, oh, it, it says Exhibit A, project description. I guess that's the thing I never saw.
Yeah, so we saw project, it's RV park, so it's like this, yeah.
That's not an Exhibit A. Is there an Exhibit A?
You're looking at something that I haven't looked at for a while.
Okay. Cause, cause, I mean, that, the project description would, you, you're saying that it would be, it makes sense that it would be like part of a phased project.
Improvements at the county fairgrounds isn't the Exhibit A.
So, I, I, I guess again, my, my point, my whole point here, Bob, is, is, so we have a lot of grants that we apply for regularly that are out there, that we depend on, that we rely on. And if we screw one up, it impacts our ability to get.
Oh, I, well.
And our name is on this.
Well, we are actually.
Oh, I see it, I see.
We are the responsible party for reporting the grant and the grant progress. That's the part that we were not aware of.
Right.
That we had a grant that we're responsible for reporting on, that was placed on behalf of Curry County.
But I, I guess.
And it says right here is this, you know, um, any such management contract or operating agreement will be structured as a qualified management contract as described in IRS Revenue Procedure ninety-seven thirteen as amended or supplemented, so.
Well, I'm not arguing with any of that, I'm just, uh, as I said, we've been.
The point is, this is not, just little oversight.
Well, when we read the title page and it's, and done that, and you have your management, so yeah.
It's, oh, yeah. What do we do about it?
I guess, so I guess, I guess my problem with this is, it says, recipient will make capital improvements at its county fairgrounds. So, that's not a description. That's not, that's nothing. That's, that's give us some money. It doesn't, it doesn't say that it's gonna go for, it doesn't say, normally if you're gonna get a grant, you're gonna say it's gonna be applied to, say, engineering development costs. But, right here, this says, I mean, that's, this is just throwing money at the problem, and that's, I mean, it, yeah, I, I, we don't know what the, we don't know what the description of the whole scenario is, and, and where this would be phased in. So, I, it would be, if we're signing on, if the county is signing on to complete the capital improvements, that's what, if, what is that? Because if, if we're signing on to complete the capital improvements, would that be, would that be the county signing on to do the entire, like, thirty million dollar project that you guys have?
No, that's supposed to be just the RV part.
Okay, then it should say that, in the, in the agreement.
So, I guess to answer your question, uh, what do we do to move forward? I guess we, we look at redoing it.
We start over with.
Start over, and then that has to be approved by us. And, um, that's the policy that we have in place. And again, the purpose of the policy is if something goes bad with the grant, uh, also, we have to, we have to report that grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, that's why we approve every grant that, that the county applies for.
On Exhibit A, it says right here, means the construction, modification, replacement, repair, remodeling, and renovation of a structure, or addition to a structure, that is expected to have a useful life of more than one year. Um, acquisition of land or legal interest, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff on this, Capit B.
It doesn't, it doesn't describe what the project is. It doesn't es- uh, it, that's what I mean, you just need to have a scope of work.
It's just.
So this, this is.
Well, why can't you use that for that scope of work?
Because that scope of work is, that scope of work is completely open-ended. So that would be, I mean.
He doesn't want abroad.
Right, I want, I want to.
I don't wanna abroad either.
I wanna describe, like, we've worked, if this is, I, my understanding was, you need to pay for the, the engineering and development of the RV park. That was, that's it. So in order to do that, you say, this will be that, because once you get, once you get that, as I understood what you were saying at the earlier meetings that I attended, that's some of your last stuff. Then you're moving on, then the next phase is actually, is actually paying for, and, and that's where you'll have, you'll have your design stuff. Then, you take that, this is what I understood you to say the other night, you would take that stuff, and then that would be where you'd start in with the bond, you'd be able to, you'd be able to, and it might not be the whole thing, but you could certainly get all the money you need to do the RV park. Unless you wanna pay for it straight out of T L P.
Yeah, to get back, but the thing of it is, is that the administrator of the grant said that once we get the ground leveled out, put it down there, that fulfills.
We are the administrator of the grant.
No, the grant. The grant.
You're talking, you're talking about the grantor.
The grantor. So the grantor, and they're communicating, once you get to this point, you have, I mean, we don't even have to put spaces in yet, we're just doing the groundwork and it's being confirmed with.
Outside of the project, it's the process.
Yeah, right.
So, and here's the part, Katie, I just wanna read this, so you, you. Representations, representations and warranties are received, organization and authority, recipient is a county, valid, validly organized and existing under the laws of state of Oregon. This contract has been authorized by an ordinance or a resolution, which is the normal, of the recipient's governing body, as required by its organizational documents and applicable law, which it is, which was not done.
And there's no way to move forward with that.
We could, yeah, we could, we could clearly move forward, we, my, what I would do is call Business Oregon and say, and we need to straighten this out, do all that, but before, I guess, I guess the, the message is here, the county's a key participant in this. And the county will be involved in how this is set up. It's not gonna be, it's, and, and clearly, that's appropriate, because the county has.
Haven't been involved in that until now you're here.
Well, we certainly, no, actually, we, actually, people come to us with grants all the time.
And I'm not saying it like that, I'm just saying that, and, nobody's been to any of our meetings since I've been there for ten months. You know, so I feel like these things kind of maybe have been mitigated, or maybe if the fair manager could have been able to come and talk to you guys about it, or would have sent that kind of just.
But here's, the other piece though, is, I guess. But here's, the other piece though, is, I guess that the whole point of this is, is, is partly educational, right?
Yeah, I understand, and I'm not.
And, and there's a lot of accountability, um, but when situations like this arise that, um, we have no knowledge of, right? And wouldn't have knowledge of unless it was brought forward to us by our own county employees, um, it puts us in a situation where when we were told and been told repeatedly, we do everything correctly, you don't need to basically pay attention. This makes us say, no, we need to pay attention.
But in the MOU, it's safe that you guys can have somebody on the board, so how come somebody hasn't been on the board then?
There's never been a thing where you guys don't need to pay attention, you should pay attention, that's not a problem.
Well, last night, or, last night, you were pretty convinced that we, you know, we do everything right, we do everything legal, we do everything above board, you, you, why are you basically here, and so, this, the point is, is that, no, it's, it's, it's really not being, and we're trying to ra- we're trying to rectify that.
Right.
Right.
And, and here's the piece, um, if, 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 if we're not going to be able to, um, work cohesively to do that, right? Um, if, if you think that the, that, if you don't trust the commissioners, and you don't trust them enough to even include them on a grant that you, we put their name on, then we have, we have bigger problems than just what we have in front of us.
Also, Katie, a month ago, a month ago, I did, I did, I did promote, I did propose to the commission, that, it was my recommendation that we have a commissioner on the board, and, and that was, that was argued against by, by the Fair Board, October twentieth.
So, then how come October twentieth, that wasn't brought to our attention, so we could have started working on it instead of having this workshop? I mean, because now we're, you know, I mean, to me, I would, I, if I run a business, I want to know that something's wrong either way.
But we don't, we run a public.
I, I know, but also.
We knew with the speed of a slug.
It could be just a, a spell.
So, thank goodness for computers and phones and stuff. Uh, the page for the application we have here for the Business Oregon Grant, and it says, Curry, it says County Fairgrounds Request For Grant Proposal. Applicant County Fairgrounds, Curry County Fairgrounds, and we'll get this printed for you. Legal entity, Curry County Fairgrounds, manager's inside of this, so it was applied for by the fairgrounds for the RV park. So, I think what we can do is have Chris get that.
Sure, but here.
Print it up and get it to you, so you're seeing something that looks, you're seeing something that looks.
We're missing the point here.
Here's the bigger point, you're still arguing the other point, the, the other point is, is you are, are an entity of the county, you still have to follow procedure, procurement, and rules, and our rules, when you receive a grant, whether you're the fairgrounds, whether you're the Juvenile Department, whether you're Sheriff's Department, you have to bring it here for approval. You're missing the point, you're looking at semantics, the, the, it still lies with Curry County.
But it, it also says that we have full authority, Michael's financial decisions and stuff like that, so is there a question we need to have that clarified?
You actually have an MOU that we just quoted that says that you have to follow the procurement rules, which this includes.
And the MOU also includes the ordinance five six five, which says the fairgrounds have the full authority for the business.
The MOU, the MOU, the MOU, if it's agreed, if it's agreed to between the parties, supersedes the, the ORS.
The MOU cite, cite the ORS.
I know, this particular, there's a particular clause that the parties drafted, whether that was a good idea or not, I had nothing to do with drafting this agreement, I never, I never would have agreed to it, and I think that we should, I think that you should have a more modern approach to it.
But, I guess, the thing is, is, this is, this is not approving finances, that's, that, and I think.
If you have all financial, if you're being told that you have all financial responsibilities, that's a financial responsibility.
Sure, just like the Sheriff's Department has financials over his department.
Right.
Right, he has his full ORS-driven financial responsibility over his department, but it doesn't mean that he gets to forego the grant procedures, the procurement procedures.
Like a discussion with just.
Purchasing equipment.
Right, well, and we've fallen the, the contract on some, which was, because the state, so, but then you said about getting it done, it's, it's been years of the redheaded stepchild over there at the fairgrounds and everybody else who do this, and nobody cared about what was going on at the fairgrounds until now. So, if that would have been out, with, the important thing that I heard, the first time I've heard ever, so when Brad says, we want to work together to make this happen, and I spent, told you, I would like to see, we've got all this, well, you did this, and you did this, and why this, and we're, we're relooking back twelve, fourteen years, stuff that was done, I want to hear, what can we do to help to make this work, to make it a benefit to the county? That was the thing that relieved me the most to hear that.
Yeah, and I, and I, I want to not look in the rearview mirror, I want to look forward, right?
So, we can give you that information to get that done.
So, we need to contact Business Oregon, Ted.
What was that? I can contact Business Oregon.
We need to contact Business Oregon.
Mm-hmm.
And you want a new Exhibit A?
I want an Exhibit A, I want an Exhibit A that talks about, that, that refers to the particular project, because it's my understanding that the RV park is a separate and distinct project from the overall development plan, is that correct?
It's part of the master development.
So, it's, so it'd be a, it'd be a phase of it then?
Yes.
So, so what we should do is, we should, we should say, the grant funding is, is it, because it's not, this does not encompass all of your other site work and, and, and your, all, all the other underground maps and everything, and what you, what you got to do for your big plans, so this, so this money is specifically being applied for to, to address the development of the, of the design and engineering costs related to the RV park as, as described in whatever, in, I, it's in, in some phase of your master plan, your latest one.
Yeah, and it would go, go also towards the, the building, which construction's going to be when we start doing, dropping work and maybe the utilities.
Yeah.
So, it, it's all going to that project to as far as.
To the RV park project, right, but infrastructure and everything related to that.
As your understanding right now, when you're talking about trying to do that, that tall site park down there and down on the thing, there's a lot of studies that you have to get done, and we had to go through a lot of studies to get this happening, so, that's all part of it, and we're getting dirt, and it gets, once we get to that dirt part, that's what it's going to be, and it's all for that.
And then it needs to, Katie, so I answered your question, and then it needs to come back to the board for a resolution accepting the grant in its form, that's how it's done.
Yeah, and the responsibilities associated with the grant, so I got a lot of stuff to go through, so maybe we can keep moving forward.
You know, just real quick, Brad, so there's been a couple of hands raised from the audience, this, you know, this agenda is the Joint Fair Board and the B O C, if we get into a, a town hall type thing, we, you know, it'll be, uh, so, we're, we're going to dispense with that for, for right now, and unless you actually start throwing stuff at us, um, I miss your calls here, yeah, Jerry?
Okay, we good to move forward then? Okay, so, uh, we sent, uh, we sent an email to Chris, October twenty-fifth, uh, that was the, um, uh, in preparation for the Joint Fair Board and Board of Commissioners Workshop, and it had a, a, a list of a bunch of stuff on there, and I'll kind of go through them now, and this is, I get, these questions are specifically related to, uh, the purchasing procedures and whether or not they were followed, and, um, the first one on the list is the yearly landscaping services, so i- is, is there information on that that was?
Well, that was just a discussion.
That was just a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, there, we've had, like, what, fourteen acres that we've been taking care of with someone that has nineteen, that has been working nineteen hours a week, I mean, fourteen acres is a lot to take care of, maintain, paint, mow, dig.
Sure.
You know, we have, we've had busted pipes, we've, I mean, it's a lot for somebody to do at nineteen hours, and then they were sick and, you know, so.
Yeah.
That was just a topic of discussion.
Was it a fair employee that did it?
Uh, yeah, he was nineteen hours.
Okay, that's, yeah, that was the question. Okay, so it wasn't, it wasn't somebody that was hired from outside?
No.
Okay.
No.
Clarifies that, um, so, general equipment, including the John Deere tractor.
Yeah.
So.
Our, we have a thirty-year-old, um, John Deere tractor, um, it has a mower, um.
With the.
The tiller, the backhoe, and the bucket, and, I mean, we, there's a lot of things that we do with that.
Our current, our current tractor, the tiller has about three teeth on it.
Yeah.
Um, the mower is in pieces, it broke.
Right.
Um, we don't have a backhoe, which we could have used when we were sitting out there in the rain digging with our hands, a little shovel, trying to get a water thing fixed to do that, uh, so if this tractor is, is meant to replace the other tractor, getting us the attachments we need to do that stuff.
It is, yeah, three extra attachments, um, but the other one's way beyond a plaything.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, it doesn't even.
It stopped in the middle of the, the other day.
The purchase, I guess, so there's a, if I remember reading this right, there was a purchase and then a sale of the, of the current tractor too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to sell one and buy one, right?
So, basically, what we, we can do is, we can get all these implements and we get another little tractor for about four to five thousand dollars, then we can fit that, we sell that for one or two, hopefully, which is, it would be somebody beautiful kind to do that, so if, if it's dropping our cost down,
Yeah, sure.
yet we get stuff that we still need.
So, I guess the question, my question is, are the county policies followed regarding the sale and purchase of the new tractor?
Well, we haven't sold anything yet, but the purchase yet, we went through, did our due diligence, went and researched everywhere we can find the tractor.
So, you got multiple bids and all that kind of stuff?
We got, we got multiple prices, we got pulled off, everything done, and then there was, and then most of the stuff was, Portland was closed, a lot of things were like other things, and then you got shipping, and then that, all that stuff's going to go way over what we have here that we can get right here that was basically, you know, new, that's a hundred hours.
And we've talked about that at one of our meetings, there was a public meeting, and we went overall over.
Okay, but just so you understand, when you're purchasing, the purchasing rules for the state require that in, in a situation like that, you get three similar bids, although things that we sent weren't, those were, they were stuff that was pulled up, off the internet, that's not, it, those aren't, those. What would qualify that, what's? So, if you're, if you're looking for, if you're looking for, uh, in this case, in this case, they were looking for a used, for a, for a used tractor, you'd, you'd want to, you'd want to find three that were actually for sale, and then, and then you could put them up, as long as you submit those things that were actually three used vehicles, similar things to, because what we, what we did was you had one used one and then a bunch of new stuff, from the things I saw, well, if you had three used ones, and, and one's in town and two are somewhere else, then you've solved the problem because the shipping's going to kill you, right? So, anyway, that's the, that's the procedure that, that, that you want to use, you want to, you want to actually read the, when you're, when, in fact, what we've, what we've done is we've created a new form for whenever you want to make a purchase, so that you can, it gives you a little bit of direction to remind you to go to the purchasing rules and read them and apply them in each particular case, so if you want to hire, you need to hire an engineer, if you need to hire, if you need to hire a landscaper, how, all those different people that you hire, different things you buy, the directions that, now, now bear in mind, it's not like I was sitting around thinking these things up, right? We updated our procurement rules to be in accordance with, with, um, Attorney General's rules for the State of Oregon, that's what we're using. So, when I say we need to follow them, I'm really serious, we need to follow them, and so, what you do is you read the rules in each case, and then, and it's, you know, it, it can be a little bit of a hassle, but the problem is, we're working, this is not a private business, this is the public, so we have to follow, we have to follow the public procurement guidelines, because it's, you know, this is where, it, this is where things go wrong if you don't do that, that's why it's important.
Well, we believe, we, we, that's what we, I mean, spent hours trying to find similar tractors, similar equipment, and do that, every, I mean, it wasn't, we were trying, when we sit there to do something that's going to cost two hundred dollars, we'll still look to see if we can find it cheaper someplace. We're not trying to just spend money to spend money, this is an opportunity.
And nobody, and nobody's accusing you of anything like that, Bob, it's just a matter of.
But I believe we fulfilled that agreement.
Right, yeah, and the stuff that you sent, the stuff that you sent didn't fulfill it, so that's what I'm, 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 I, this is not, I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you, this is what the rules that we have to follow, so, when I come back and I say that we need more, next time, we want to go ahead and, and, and have the conversation so that we can, because, yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's great that you found a local thing, that's, that's good, and there are ways, there, but we, we have to, we have to, you know, we do this with everything that we purchase, a- at the road department, it's, it's a, it's a big deal, and, and if you've ever been on the, on the bad side of this, for example, at the port, when we had the tsunami, we had to buy, we had to buy the, the steel to put the sheet pile wall in, well, we got a challenge, luckily, we'd done it right, but the challenge would have cost us an extra million and a half bucks, which FEMA wouldn't have been paying for, so you have to be, if, if a contractor or some other salesperson decides, for example, we have a situation in the county where people were, some, some time ago, people were securing engineering services without doing an R F P to the tune of over a million dollars over the course of a couple of years, well, we were approached by the other engineers in the State of Oregon, and they were concerned because they were going to bring suit against the county, and we would have lost, that's why it's, that's why it's important that we, that we all work together.
And, and it also.
And you guys, that wasn't you, that was me.
It also protects you.
Right.
Right, so, so, so that way, you know, it's like, oh, we're, we're, we're buying just Scott's tractor, right? Not, we're not buying, you know, like, we're Bob's buddy's tractor, right? It shows that there was due diligence, this was the best price and the best use of public funds.
Right.
So, are there limitations to our search radius, I mean, can we search clear across the U S and?
If you want, I mean, if you want, you can do.
Well, I'm just, you're saying that we need to have comparables, and if there's nothing, you know, there's not a lot local, then we're going to have to reach super far.
I agree, and so, and by doing that, you will have, you will have sac- you will satisfy that the, because, because if you think about it for a minute, and in fact, I heard this last night at the meeting, when we're talking about the repl- the orca, the orca repair and, and other stuff, people said, and I, and trust me, I've been there, right, and the only people that do that, they're the, like, the roof guy, I can't remember what, what, there's, there's only, yeah, the door guy, there's only one door guy, okay? Not acceptable, the door guy is probably the guy, the guy you're going to use, but you're probably going to have to reach out to somebody else, and you know what mostly they'll say, like, for example, at the road department, when we want to put, when we want to get oil to put on our chip seal, there's only three companies that will, that have the, the kind of oil that we need, and half the time, two of those companies won't bid, and so, what you have to do is get a definition to bid from those people in that scenario, but in, but in a case like that, when you look at used equipment, just go ahead, like, door guy, you'd say, hey, we want you to come do this door, they're, they're not going to turn you down, they're going to say, you can get it locally for four thousand dollars, we'll come do it for twelve, you know, if we're coming all the way from, from Salt Lake City or something. So, but nevertheless, then, then the requirement is satisfied, and we're all, and we're all, everybody's covered, you're all covered, you know, the, you may have noticed, you may have noticed that in, in the, in the ORSs and in our MOU, there's a requirement that, that individual fair board members have a bond. Now, that's covered by our insurance, but there's a reason for that, there's a reason, because you guys are charged with managing and being in charge of, in fact, there's, the ORS says, um, ten thousand dollar bond or twenty percent of the revenues of the fair in the previous year, whichever is less, which is weird, but that's, that's just how it used to be, so, that's because money is important, and we have to, we have to, and, and you guys could be held personally liable for misuse of those funds, so that's why you need to be protected, and procurement rules protect you.
So, two things, that's, two things going on, as far as the tractor, part of the discussion we were having with the tractor is our old, our other tractor, our bigger tractor, whose implements are what's broken, it has other assets that we can use it for, but if we were to go buy, there's no used parts for that tractor, this is what those costs are called to defy, now we're getting one which is basically, according to one of the tractor dealers, demo mileage, hours, a hundred hours, it was used, I'm just explaining, this is, this was the thought behind it, to do the thing?
Right, it's not, it's not about the quality of the tractor, it's just about the process in which you did it.
Right, and so we went through it, the only place you can do, only place you can find it, you got to go online, and we went to dealers, we went to the dealer, these are all not private sales, these are all dealer sales, dealer sales, it, it's.
And, and also, using a dealer, using a dealer is another justification for buying, you, you could even buy one that is more expensive than the others, but.
Correct.
You have to go through the process, and then you have to write down, you say, you know what, I could have bought a Mahindra, I could have bought this, but I got a John Deere, it was a little bit more expensive, and you know what I liked about it? We had a local service guy or something like that, write that down, then you're covered.
If I got that was covered underneath there, that's, that's what we, all the documentation had, and that's what we based them on.
Sure, Chris?
On the packet that I sent once you requested the information, on page twenty-one, there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different tractor comparables for the whole unit, as far as comparable for the tractor.
Right, are, but are they comparable tractors?
Yes.
Yes.
Were they, were they, were they for? Were they, were they, were they for, and they were for sale at that time?
For sale, yes.
Yes.
They're for sale, they were in with the implements, cause we were trying to show value of each implement, and then there's also, uh, tractor sale on there too.
I saw the implements, I saw the implements.
It's a forty-two page thing.
I'll tell you where I like to get, we have a little tractor that's over in the garage right now, cause it's for the parks and it doesn't get used a lot in the winter, we could've probably got that, that water thing that I saw where they're broken yesterday. Well, and so we want, I wanna get to the point where you're saying, if you need something, we got a road department with tons of equipment.
I sure do.
I don't know that, two o'clock in the morning when you're trying to deal with stuff like that.
Yeah, we still, we can help you.
But he's brought up from just a project that was already planned by Dick. But it's just like, we, well, mower, and then we use it, for a week, we use our tiller for getting the arena ready to do that. So it's not just because we have one little thing, it has the values to cover all that stuff, so we can be responsible to take care of what I need, cause why should we have an extended expense on the county when we have to do it, and we have a need, we have a real need.
Yeah, but we got equipment.
We, I got mowers, I, I was at the road department today, and there's two mowers that weren't being used, uh.
So, let's, let's keep, let's keep moving, cause I got lots to get with.
But I, I think we fulfilled that, uh, that obligation, I think, and then, when we're talking about.
Clarification?
Yeah, so we have these new rules of procurement and a new document that was done, and has that been provided to the fairground and could it be provided to them, so they have the guidance that they need?
Yeah, of course.
Yes, yes, yes.
It was provided Friday.
So I can.
No, it's, it was provided Friday? No, you, we, you're a county department, we provided it, we provided it to all departments and notified everybody when it was approved in, I wanna say, January or February? So, so we, we're, we're not actually, we're not actually in the business of hand-delivering, the, every department is, every department under the personnel rules is required to, so I, I take, I take exception to that. So you're bound by the personnel rules, I communicated with you about them previously, extensively, about RFPs and stuff with, with, maybe it was when Caitlin was there. But, but yeah, it's, it's been a, it's been out there.
So, are you satisfied with the information with the tractor now?
Yeah, that's fine, that's, I, I wanted to get, I wanted to get across the process and why it's important to protect anybody.
Well, we totally understand that, I mean, we have people that dealt with that.
So.
One thing, Brad though, was mentioning about, like, we talk about the door, and we're looking about how, cause county procedures, the five-point general procedures, contracts for goods and services, except as permitted by ORS two-seven-nine-D dash zero-six-five. And that states, contracting agency may award a procurement of goods or services that does not exceed ten thousand dollars in any manner.
Correct.
That the county deems practical or convenient, including by direct subs or award. So, that fits, that roll-up door fits in it, and we can't have, that's the, the building that's kind of holding itself together down there, we need to do that, when that door, roll-up doors, it could cause injury.
Yeah, I was using that as an example.
No, but I'm just explaining, yeah, we understand.
The door's not on my list.
Right, no, but we understand.
How I, how was, like I was talking with you about last night, how I would phrase that in the public meeting is, hey, we got this roll-up door we're going out for a procurement for, it's under the ten thousand dollar requirement of receiving three bids. We did go out and try to find some cheaper doors, we couldn't find anything, but then that's very clear to the public as opposed to, have we got the roll-up door, we got the one guy, it's the only guy, it's all we can do, you, you know what I mean? And it wasn't really discussed really clearly, so I think as a board, if you're able to do that, you're more clear and explain those procedures and procurement rules.
I understand that, that's.
That, that's all, like, what.
You probably understood it wasn't totally clear about everything, we're just kinda moving along to get the things done.
Sure.
But, um, yeah, no, and the thing of it is, we had just used them to repair the other doors, and this was the last thing we expected happening.
No, no, and, oh, okay, okay.
So who, what we gave you, back to the tractor, I'm sorry, um, because what we gave you, all of that stuff that Chris gave is not correct, is that, so is that like something, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but, but in the future, in the future, the, the goal is, would be to have it be very clear, and it's not, it's not, for, for me, it's clear so that we have a record, so that if people come and wanna look at it, you say, here's what they look for, and, and also you reference it in your minutes, like you said.
But I felt like we did so much work on that.
Yeah, cause it wasn't just a one-day deal.
And so that's why I just, I was like, okay, well, whatever.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, the, uh, there's a whole list of things that you can do with that, because, you know, I mean, when you're talking about tractors, um, I, like, like John, John talking about the tractor that we have over at Parks, and I mean, it's not big enough. It's not, you know, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's, it's, it's, those are, you just sorta have to, like, at a thing, depending on what you're doing and, and the scope of work that you're actually doing on the fairgrounds, I, I don't know how big that tractor is, I, you know, normally you want, you know, more horsepower you can get, the better, and, and if you're spending money on a tractor, you kinda wanna spend more. You know, you wanna get the, get the machine that's gonna get, answer all your problems, so I hope you did that, but that's, that's.
To be honest, if, if we need a bigger tractor to do some work, we need somebody to come do the work.
Okay, and that's a good idea.
Yeah, because it gets to a point where this is far enough, you wanna have an employee handle it, after that, go get a professional. And it's clearly understood, same vision here, make sure everything.
Right.
Up and up and doing things correctly.
Yeah, I'm not in a hurry, I'll stay here all night, I'm, I'm, I'm all good, but I got, I got.
Honestly, I slept two hours last night.
But, but I got a lot of stuff, so, uh, to work through here, so, uh, uh, so, the engineer of record, uh, contract with Civil West Engineering Service, did that, did that contract go through county council?
Um, they, they coordinated with us, they coordinated with us, and my, my only point is that if, you have to be careful when you have an eng, it's, it's, I don't believe, I can't remember, this is a situation that happened at the road department too, where we had, we had an engineer, this is, this is one of the issues that, that I was telling you about earlier. You wanna be really careful about, now, for a big project, you can get an engineer of record for the entire project, but you wanna kinda scope that when you're doing that, and you wanna, otherwise, otherwise, you're gonna need to, you're gonna need to get an individ, an engineer of record for each individual project.
So.
That can be expensive and, and really problematic.
That's why I was ripping that way, so that we can have somebody for a five-year term, and, and so for good practice, cause every time we do something, so, well, do you have engineer drop, that we have to go through this again. So we had to go through an RFP to find engineers, and you get two show up, and then you get maybe nobody show up, but this time we had two show up for the extended one, because it would be covering our plan to get through from RV park through the convention center, which we could fill up right now.
And that would be a specialized engineer, you know, with, with us, with the, with the road department, it really didn't make sense, because you're, we were doing roads, and then when you, all of a sudden, you're doing a bridge, that's like, there's only two engineers in the state that you wanna hire for that.
Yeah, this, this was, uh, this jumped out to me, because if, we had problems with the road department, uh, the previous road master, we had some problems there with this particular topic that could've cost, and hopefully won't cost the county a lot of money.
Right, this is their specialty.
This has gotta go through council.
This is their, well, we, yeah, we posted it on, and this is their specialty.
Okay, so, uh, all documents.
We just, we send up on it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All, all documents relating to work performed on the arena repairs, now, was that done by outside people, was it done, how, how did, how did those arena repairs take place, was somebody hired to do it, was there an RFP?
There's been no repairs.
No.
One time we had an arch, a structural, architectural, a structural engineer come out to test the purlings, cause we wanted to know, were the purlings okay, so we can just replace the roof, we're talking about, and so we needed somebody, and he gave us a recommendation to do this. And that's what everybody kinda got upset, not using arena, but we don't use it in high wind events, we don't use it in the heavy rain events, we have a big, a thirty-by-thirty skylight that doesn't have plastic over it. But, there has been no work, they came out and take a look, and said that we, we need to get somebody to come in here to scrape everything down, remove the rust, seal it so it doesn't rust again.
So, no works taken.
No work taken.
We have, yeah, we have two engineers in the section report.
Okay.
And then we have a current RFP out.
Okay.
To try to get that worked, so that the structural engineer can actually say, yes, the building, the bones of the buildings are strong enough where you can save a ton of money by just skinning and update that.
Another question I had on the arena was, when I originally walked through, a while back, I was told it was, you, you couldn't use it, it was condemned.
We can't use it in heavy wind or heavy rain events, so it can't be used at this, uh, for, in the winter coming in. So basically, we have two months that we can use it.
It's kinda scary.
Yes, it is.
Cause you know, the wind kinda kicks up pretty quick here.
Oh, yeah, but he said, they said, just to be safe, and everything looks trucksy, but you don't wanna have a gust of wind catch something and peel back the roof.
So I've never been provided with that engineering, uh, uh, report, because, and I think it's important, I think it's important that, that I look at it, because since the county insurance.
Which one is it?
Um, it's for the arena, because the county, you know, the county pays for the insurance, and I would wanna submit that to, to, um, county so we can, we can, I can give the insurance.
It's actually, it's actually been closed down, except for rodeo, and it was closed down again after that, so we had rodeo in there, which may not happen anymore, but that's a dying breed this day. But, uh, yeah, that's the one time we used it, was for the road, and if the wind came up, we were, we were going, nope, shut it down, that was definitely happened.
Yeah.
The rest of the time is closed down.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, a lot of liability with that, we put a lot of folks in that arena, I saw that arena, and it was like, wow, wow.
I mean, that's why we're in a, we're in a hurt.
And, and I'd hate to have somebody get hurt there, so I think it would be good to protect the county, protect everyone from potential litigation, to have a lawyer review it. Um, so, moving forward, uh, let's see, uh, the agreement with the fire camp, I know, uh, the fire camp was out there, and, um, that's an exclusive use agreement with them. Um, I, and I don't remember seeing any paperwork or anything associated with that, was there?
No, it's, it's just like renting the grounds, basically, what it's supposed to do, they, they wanted to rent every piece of inch of dirt that we have, they wanted to be the only ones doing it, it's been done in the past with the three other big, four other big fires we had here. Uh, the fairgrounds has established itself as an emergency center, so if there's a fire or other emergency, whatever event we have planned, it's out the door, and that takes precedence for servicing the county to get it done.
It was emergency facility.
So, it was emergency.
So I'd still like to see that contract.
Oh, you can see the contract.
Well, now, before, in the future, your best bet is to run that by council so that we can look at it.
Okay, well, it would be the same, it would be the same thing, it's like renting the buildings and the facilities.
Oh, no, I, I get it, but it's, you know, you're dealing with the feds, and it's just a different, I always, like, like, we, we did a deal with them out at the road department, uh, that's, it's a separate agreement, we, you know, but I review it.
So we, we, we look at it as the same thing, well, they're renting DOSH up, and we have a price for DOSH to rent it out. Uh, somebody comes in and wants to write, or rents showcase out, we have a rate for that. So, we, and, and, and we also considered the fact that since we will have to kick some people off to do things to do that, that we adjusted for pricing for that to get it done without gouging anything, it was very fair to get it done, so, but you can get a copy, that, that's a lot of work.
I'd, I'd like to review, I'd like to review an, an agreement of that scope in, in advance next time.
And mostly that was based, that was the federal, their contract for that stuff.
I know, I, I don't mind arguing with the feds.
Basically, we, basically, the thing we go there, make sure, you know, we have to take care of the toll or paper, and you guys got your own garbage and stuff, that's, we're making sure they put that in place.
All right, so the, uh, current, uh, contract for services between the fair board and, uh, Spirit Miller, who's, does an amazing architectural, uh, job. Um, additionally, the barn demolition, uh, I didn't see that an RFP was submitted, uh, on that, was an RFP submitted on that?
Yes, we submitted, we, well, submitted, no.
To, to us for review?
No, they put it through, we put it out there to try to get, and we were doing it for the, to recycle things first, to get it done, we didn't take the bid, so that was.
Right, so, so, so RFPs need to be submitted for review under the, under the procurement rules, so run them by our office.
Sure, we'll say, I say, we can't, I'm making visible, I don't have an issue.
All right, so we've already talked about the, uh, application for Business Oregon, um, so, uh, moving on to the master gardener's greenhouse, um, uh, how, we, I've heard some conversations about that. How, how did the fair board determine the rental rate, uh, for the greenhouse space?
Well, it's like any other rental rates that we have a discussion at, and also with the master gardener's spot, it's about what that, that similar, uh, greenhouses and, and, and events, training, educational programs, stuff, are hosted by other fairgrounds to do that. And they usually charge a very nominal or low fee, one dollar. Uh, and the master gardeners thought that would be kind of unfair to the situation it is, so they wanted to, to give us something, kind of help doing that. It's also, the thing of it is, is that the master garden program's associated with OSU. So we have OSU as our, our foundation tenant, we also have four-H with OSU, it made only sense to bring, to give the master gardeners a location that would improve our, our, uh.
They brought rates from other managers.
They brought rates from, yeah, we do that, so we, that's the easy answer.
And the rate was touching the agreement.
Well, no, that's how, and that's, that's how we tied it all again.
And Julia and, right.
So, we did do, Paulie, five years ago, when we first started this stuff, we checked with all of various demonstrations, greenhouses across the state, and we found that no one paid rent of any kind, they all, some are on city property, some are on special district, some are on fairgrounds, some are on county property. Um, so, uh, none of them did, and then COVID hit and our, our program, um, got delayed, or our project got delayed. So, um, we, we had that information, what we did was actually look at our budget to see what we were capable of paying, because we wouldn't want to, you know, sign a lease for something that was outside of a budget that we would be able to pay. But the, cause the comps are zero, and recently, we went back and checked with Josephine and Jackson County and four other randomly, um, selected gardens across the state, just to confirm that no one had changed in the past few years, and they all came back as, um, one person came back with a dollar fee, and all the rest came back as, you know, they have their free, as charge on the property because they provide a public benefit. So the comp is zero, but we looked at our budget to determine what we could pay and offer that.
Right. So then. I guess, uh, a quick question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, what, two questions, and I should be able to answer the one, cause I should have been prepared to read it, but I didn't. Um, was the, was the gardening center on your master plan?
Oh, well, it is.
I went to it, yeah.
So, it's just working and developing the OSU, so it's a tie-in for OSU, and if it spaces, doesn't even get used?
So we, I, so it probably wasn't originally on their master plan, because it wasn't something that they were proposing, so master gardeners have ident, we went through and looked at a variety of sites, looking at actually, um, unused, uh, properties that the county might have that would be sufficient. We talked to the city of Gold Beach about Buppington, we've looked at some parks in the city of Brookings, we looked at a few different locations. Um, most recently, last December, we were before the city of Gold Beach and talking to them about Buppington, and they strongly urged us to pick the fairgrounds. Um, and so, we had really, pretty much exhausted all the other alternatives, so we approached the fairgrounds to see if this was something that would fit within, um, their plan, because it has a public benefit, it will bring more people to the fairgrounds, help us with our visibility and viability, um, providing more public, uh, programs to the community, because we don't really have a home. Um, most master gardener associations have a garden like this, which is their home, it makes them very visible. So, we see this as something that provides a benefit and a linkage to what already goes on, as a fair.
No, I, no one's, no one's arguing validity or the practicality of it, it's just the process, right?
Right.
So, how did you go through about approving the process, right? So if it was part of your master plan, it was, you know, you're three years into your master plan, you're like, hey, when do, you know, that, so I just was curious if, 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 okay, so that, that was my question.
Yeah, no, that was a different idea.
So, uh, I know there's been some issues with sewer line there. Quite a few, so, do you, my question is, uh, does the fair board possess accurate maps showing locations of underground utilities, uh, and how will location services be paid for?
So, as of today, we did get final information from the city of Gold Beach, a year ago, we got planning clearance from the city of Gold Beach on the location and the scope of the project, and at that point, that sewer line was not identified as a problem. And we had looked at a variety of maps, and we also had utility locators come out, we had rotor ruder come out, we did a lot of work to identify this, and when we submitted the building permit application, new information was provided. So we started again trying to identify that. As of today, we have found out that the, a main line that is nine feet under and has an angle is under a portion of where our greenhouse will be. So we are not prepared at this point to tell, uh, to describe what the new layout will be, but we're gonna go back and rearrange the layout, so that we know permanent structures over the sewer line. Once we have that defined, we'll come back to the fairgrounds, also the city of Gold Beach, and to the building department, just to make sure that we're all clear on what our next steps are and that we got, done our diligence. We did understand that there was a lateral, which we were willing to relocate and put a clean-out in, um, with our own money. The main is not, that's not an option, so we're now gonna reconfigure the alignment, and that was to finalize that information today, and it wasn't provided in our early, we. And it wasn't provided in our early review a year ago from the city.
No, and I've heard two different, I've heard, that's the, that's the third version of that. I mean, you know, that's the accurate one. We, we heard five, we heard eight. We heard it wasn't there. We heard, I heard a lot of things. So.
And we do have maps at the office and they will be paying for the utilities and they are hiring their own contractor.
And as far as that, we have maps, we have blueprints, we have everything else. We have painted lines over the place now because we've had see the, the, the water, we've had the electric and everybody's marking lines for everything that. We had actually had somebody come out and find the sewer. That's the one that, like, one, remember when I say all hands on deck when you gotta do things during the fair? There's a sewer line that comes out of showcase that goes in and there. Apparently, it's shifted, so we have to get it out. So during the fair. Fair board managers were also, uh, totally clean up.
I heard about that.
Yeah, that was very exciting to do. So, yeah, the, the, we had the plans show for them. All this other surveys worked and we've had the, the lower fields marked. And just that's all, yeah.
Bob, I think the key takeaway is here, we just want to know. We just.
Well, yeah, we're telling you.
Just communicate.
Trust me, when you spend a, a week going through blueprints to try to find where, which blueprint has that pipe on it, it's not fun.
So, uh, okay, moving forward, uh, this was something that I got, uh, contacted about after the fair. And, uh, so liquor control enforcement, uh, at the fairgrounds. I was told that by some law enforcement folks who were not on duty that showed up there, that there were some kids that were having access to alcohol. There were, there were, it was a problem. And there was a lack of control in, um, the alcohol and the purchasing of alcohol at the fair.
Are they mandatory refertilizers? So they have reported that?
So, yes. And, and, uh, they did. So, um.
And I'll be arrested.
And we, as a board, we thought that there was going to be, uh, Brookings, Gold Beach PD and the sheriffs, typically they take at night. And they do that and they weren't there. I guess they weren't asked. So that's something we have discussed as a board and that we'll be making sure.
So was it, was it this direct sale from the beer wine vendor?
That, I, that I know.
Or was it somebody else got it? Because we, we kind of thought of, when we said after that, that's BS. That's not right. So what we're going to do, what I think we would do is implementing is that they have to come to their office to get it or the vendor has to give them a tag.
Right. So that, that's my question.
Hold them a beer without a tag?
Yeah. Was, was there anything like that in place? Is, I guess my question.
Oh, I got carded.
Yeah, if you, if the vendors have, the vendor has their permission, they're responsible for, for doing that. They have to do it all.
So it was my understanding though, that it was like, there was, was there a beer garden or was there?
Yeah, there's a beer garden set off to the.
So it's not roped off.
That, I think that was the problem because the people were.
It was roped off.
In front of the arena.
Yeah, in front of the arena, it was roped off.
Well, he made one, they're not required to stay in there and drink. Is that what you're asking?
That seemed, that's what, I wasn't there. That's what was reported. So I, that people were outside of the beer garden area.
Yeah, it's not a specific area where you have to stay.
So that's, so that, so if you got carded, if you got carded, you got carded when you walked into the, into the bear?
When I walked, no, when I quit a ticket and then they give you a stamp.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I think we need something more, like a ban that you.
Well, they're supposed to be secured.
Yeah, I mean, that's my question. Isn't there, isn't there like a requirement when you sell alcohol that there's some kind of?
So that, so, so there is. So, um, I, I, because of my former role as the juvenile director, I was kind of consulted on this a little bit. So, um, I did look, look into this a little bit because it was concerning, right?
Oh, yeah, it is.
So, um, the vendor, um, provided OLCC. And when you do, when you have an event, you have to provide a map in which you are going to be serving alcohol. And they provided a map of the fairgrounds. Which was very concerning. So they, they, the stipulation was that there was to be, um, there was to be, uh, secured. To ensure that, um, alcohol was consumed responsibly. Now, the, the question is, is who's responsible to ensure that there's security for this? Who's responsible for setting up the security to ensure that, that it's being done responsibly?
Well, like I said, most of the time we usually have law enforcement reserve.
Right. So, so if they weren't set up and it was the fair manager's responsibility to do so and you oversee the fair manager, it ultimately becomes your responsibility. Right? So.
We're responsible.
Yeah, and so.
I mean, we own it. I'll own whatever. So I, we know that it's a problem and we talked about it as a board and we have a plan for next year.
Yeah. Well.
I'd like to work with you on the plan for next year. Um, I think it would be.
I would like to talk with Wendy and Chief Nile and, you know.
Yeah, because that's something we can't have.
So I, I want to keep going on the alcohol topic right now because I, I, I looked at some other stuff that I didn't understand. Um, and I'm glad you're here, Jay, because you know a lot more about this through your, your business than I do. Um, so, uh, first thing I want to reference is, uh, county policy and procedures. Um, under restrictions, number three, it says no alcohol purchase, uh, no alcohol tobacco marijuana products or any other illegal items can be purchased with a credit card. So, uh, I looked at some of the credit card spending and, um, and there's, there's a, a few things on here that I don't understand. So, um, let's see. So there's a, there's some purchases and this was, this is last year, um, June four, twenty-two. And this was at McKay's. And this is a credit card purchase, uh, Rogue Dead Gail eleven ninety-nine, two purchases for that. And then one purchase for, uh, Rogue, uh, Hazy IPA. What, what would that be for? Is that, or is that for sale? Is that for, what, what, what's that for?
He signed the credit card receipt. For comedy, the comedy night resale?
How does that work?
They, when they had the comedy.
Right.
People learn to do that and then.
So the purchase is, the purchase of the alcohol is to sell?
Yeah, it was to sell. Well, we assume it was to sell by the people who attended. That's what I believe was. Well, no, you, you got seventy-five people. You're not buying twenty cases. Everything kind of.
Yeah, this was, I think, I think they're four packs, but, um.
Yeah, and we're not going to have a comedy anymore.
So I think it was a four pack, a four pack and a four pack. So you're talking about what?
And who was carding that?
That's on the, on the, uh, fair card.
I was probably for that, the same. And I don't think we're going to have any of those events again. And we're just not for that.
Good. So, um, what, I, I mean, I'm not familiar with that stuff, Jay. You, you have a business that deals with that. I, what, what are the rules on that? What's the law on that?
Well, I mean, you have, you have an event, you have to get an OLCC license for your event. And you have to make sure that you purchase your alcohol responsibly within state permit rules.
Okay.
Um, and.
It's OLCC, right?
Yeah.
So did you guys have a, a permit for that?
Yes.
For twelve bottles of beer?
No, you just get, you get a permit to serve. No, you have people, not everybody drinks Bud Light. Or you've got a family, you would get things for different.
And all we have is a, is a receipt for, well.
There were a bunch of other stuff bought, uh, purchased. But, um, yeah, there was just those.
Yeah. And those events, we're not going to have those events.
Who, who, who was the OLCC license under? But, I mean, was it under the fairgrounds or?
I can pull up the state.
Yeah, that'd be good to know. Cause I mean, if the OLCC, somebody had to, somebody had to apply for the OLCC permit to serve and sell alcohol.
I would assume it would have been the previous manager. But again, we don't intend to have those events.
Good. So there, there's another one, there's another purchase of alcohol on the card. Uh, and again, the county policy is not to use the card for a purchase of alcohol.
Okay.
Uh, and that's on, uh, April eighteenth. And that was at Fred Meyer's. And that's for Two Town Cider and that's ninety-five, ninety-six. So what would that?
I think it was a comedy event. We had a couple of those nights.
So same thing, the alcohol's purchased for the comedy event?
Yeah, and IDs checked when they come in. Adults only were inside there to do that. And it was inside a showcase building. Wasn't on the grounds or anywhere else.
Okay. And, and so there was a license for that as well, right?
It should have been, yes. I would believe so. We're looking to see.
Yeah, OLCC license. For the April twenty-first, twenty-second, comedy was, Caitlin applied for it.
So Caitlin was the manager. No, I know. But so.
She has the, the handler permit.
Server.
Server permit, thank you.
Okay, so she, it was basically Caitlin running an event at the, at the fairgrounds, right? So she was the, she was the OLCC license holder?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And she was trying to develop an event that we didn't have here to do that. So we can, you know, bring in more people to do that. And of course, once we had our second one, everybody else thought it was a great idea to have it in Agnes, Port Harbor, Crescent City. Now there's comedy nights everywhere, so it's not really effective to do it.
And the board.
It's just not the kind, it doesn't feel that that kind of event is something we need to go.
But there is a license for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I, I didn't, I never found any of them. So.
I can show you on my phone.
No, 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 I, I, it's not that I don't believe you. I just couldn't find them. Um, okay. So then I saw several purchases and, and, and I, I, I know this is for events that you were having, but, uh, December nineteenth, twenty-two, twelve thirty-one, four eighteen twenty-three, five three twenty-three. So these are all purchases through, uh, Artrock Brewing with the credit card? So, so you're probably buying cages of beer?
Can, can.
Cause I mean, some of these are like, uh, two hundred twenty-eight dollars, one seventy-one. There's a refund of eighty-five dollars.
Yeah, so.
How, how's that work?
They, Kate would make the purchase and then anything that wasn't used, they would come pick up and refund for the unused.
Okay. And.
It was my understanding, right?
My understanding as well.
And, and then we have licenses for each of those events too, right? Yeah, okay. Um, so then this one I really didn't understand. Um, so this was a, this was an alcohol purchase. It was twelve nineteen twenty-two and it was in California at All-Star Liquor. And it was four hundred eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents. There was tequila, vodka, um, uh, it, it itemizes it out, but, um.
But that didn't for New Year's?
New Year's.
So was that alcohol purchased then to, for an event, for the New Year's event?
It would have been New Year's event if I could. That wasn't one of my favorites because I don't really give a rat's about New Year's Eve and I didn't intend to do that. But, uh, I'm not a New Year's Eve kind of guy, but that's what my understanding, I would, that's what.
So how's it, what kind of event was it? How's it work?
So many people asked about it, to do it and everything. And then it's like with everything else and then not as many people showed up as could have done. And I had been involved with New Year's Eve bashes with the, with the fairgrounds putting on, with the friends had put it on and do it before.
So.
No, it was nothing that was.
But I want to get back to the alcohol purchase, right?
Right.
So, so did, do you buy a ticket to get in or do you buy individual alcohol as you come up to the bar?
I wasn't.
It was both.
I don't know.
It was both. So, does a ticket cover alcohol?
No.
Okay. So the purchase of alcohol is individual, like, hey, give me a margarita or give me whatever. Okay. So, and that was four hundred eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents. So that would have been for that event. Um. Again, Jay, you know a lot more about this than me.
Um, and everybody was carded before they came in to do it. So we just heard it was carded. But again, I don't think we're going to have that event either.
Well, um. Uh, so. Broke state law. Because you bought alcohol in California. And it's actually a misdemeanor and OSP would have to be involved. And the venue will have to be, uh.
Looked at.
And reported to OLCC.
Didn't know that.
Well, that's why we're having this conversation right here.
Yeah, no, that was, that's kind of surprising to find out, so.
Um, it's, it's why we're having this conversation. And again, I s, the, the, the whole issue is oversight, right? It's like, do we need oversight? Should we have oversight? What kind of oversight should we have? Uh, how, uh, and, and back to my original responsibilities, which are to safeguard and protect the taxpayer, uh, money and liabilities of the county.
Brad, can I, can I ask you a question? Sorry.
Yes.
Um, so, does the fair board check the receipts of that credit card or is that county?
They're, well, they're responsible for the employee who's spending, they're responsible for the spending of the employee as they point out with the ORS.
Right. But that's just my question. Were we just checking that and approving it or is it the county checking the county card or the county?
Well, and this, and I checked this county card because again, the, the whole, this whole issue had my attention. So that's why I went back and I just looked at, okay, let's look at spending, right? Um, how is spending occurring? How are the, is it following the RFP process? Are we, I'm, I'm tracking the money. Uh, um, because again, this had my attention. That's why I was doing it. So, um.
But to answer your question, it's, it's, it's both, right? So it's approved, you know, through the fair board, the purchasing through the employee. And then it comes, um, the rec, the, the, the credit card statement to get paid comes to the county.
Well, it's, it's, a budget is given for the event. The employees, all that budget taken care of and they get it done. It has to be entered through the dollar mark. And it's, it should have been where the employee should have been understanding of, of all laws and them to do that. And they file a claim that they're doing that. We don't, once we give them the budget.
So again, in, in a situation like that, when you're going to have an event, and I know it sounds like it's overkill. And you can get mad at me if you want, but if you don't want to go to jail, refer issues to me so the legal department can review it. That's why I'm here. And when we do that, then it becomes my fault, okay? And you can say, hey, we gave it to that low life attorney and he said it was cool. He said it was cool. And then it falls on me. That's why we have that role. But, but to your point, to your point, I was being referred, these are credit card reviews. There's a whole process, as you know. And during this time, I was, I was solely county counsel. I wasn't given these to be reviewed. They were being reviewed hopefully by, by the fair board. Then they come, then they come into finance, finance reviews them. There was a finance director, there was a whole staff. I was, I'll admit, I was given, I was given some credit cards to take issue with. And it was Cory Boyce taking people out for lunch or breakfast. So I made his life miserable. Cause that's also viol, a violation of the credit card policy. But no one ever brought these. If I'd seen these, if I'd seen them earlier, we wouldn't have been having the conversation. But that's why, and so now, right now, right now, I'm, I'm overseeing finance too. Because we're, we're actually outsourcing a lot of that so that we can get the level of professionalism that's out there that will actually protect everybody, including you. That's our, that's, that's the goal here. And so, um, it's, it, it is a serious thing. And that's why, you know, um, when I have questions, trust me. I don't even like people. I would rather be with my horses, right? So when I come and do that, I ask questions, I'm not doing it to, I'm just doing it against my job. And this.
So what do we do?
Well, well, we have to report, self-report.
Okay.
To OSP that alcohol was illegally purchased in that California for sale in Oregon.
Okay.
At a venue, the county.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
And there was no oversight failure at every level.
We just have to let them do their job.
Okay. So we will, we will do that. Um, all right. I'm going to keep moving forward. Uh, TLT funds. So now I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, uh, county budget book, looking at some line items. Um, and so, uh, between September twenty-two, September twenty-three. And so between September twenty-two, September twenty-three, there was approximately seventeen thousand dollars. Utility charges were paid out. It looked like that was the TLT, from the TLT improvement budget. So my, my question is, are you using TLT money to pay expenses other than capital improvement costs?
Well, it, it, on that particular one, it's just like, well, first of all, it's, it's set up where it's, it's not just capital improvement, but that's our focus, ninety-nine point nine percent focus. And as I, I mentioned last night, we had applied for the ARP fund.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it specifically said, this is my understanding, it, it, it said that for fairs where it's included was as an example to be used, because for two years, we lost income. No, nothing coming in zilch.
Right, but you can't use TLT money for.
Well, before it was changed, it was under the ordinance, the law's just for a facility. As far as we're seeing, it doesn't say it can't be used for doing that. But it was put in the budget and it was, and it went through budget committee and it went through budget approval to get it done, that we're using it. You have two years of no income to do that, and then you get shut down with the one thing that we face, lost income, because we actually have lost income, no fare, no rentals, nothing. Other than what we had for the.
Right, now I was on the, I was on the budget committee, right?
Right, yeah, so that was put there, so it was all vibrant.
And, and, and this is over, I missed this, okay? But this appears that i- if you are using TLT money to pay e- expenses other than capital improvements.
But it's, it's coming out, since we have some income now to do it, because to do that, you have to shut everything down to get, and it's my understanding how it gets done. So there is no further thing that's coming out of it. Now that we have the income to pay for those utilities.
Okay, so do, do I understand what you're saying, and if I'm tracking you, is that you, it was used when you didn't have any money?
Right.
And then now it's not being used because you have money?
Correct.
Okay. So why? Only because you had to, or because?
Well, it's, you can't, you got to keep the water on, you got to keep the lights on.
Yeah, but it's, but, but still.
You've got no choice. You got, we have, you had no income to get it done, and that's why.
But there's an ORS that says you can't do that.
But you can't use a, is it?
Yeah. Maybe I misunderstand, but.
Oh, and it's, it's for those facilities, it's, it's.
Well, now, if you're talking about.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
If there's a limitation, and, and remember, this whole thing is completely screwed up because there was the, there was the TLT funds that, that were approved by the voters. And then that was modified.
Right.
And, and they created another, and, and another entire fund that, that was funded for a couple of years, and it's got, I can't remember what's got in it now, a hundred and sixty-eight or something, it's, it's not, you know, the one fund, I can't remember how big that one is, but now we're back where it's just going into, it's going into the, into the fund, and, and at this point, it's my understanding, at this point, that you could use, you could use TLT funds to, based on the current scenario, you could use TLT funds to pay for.
Utilities.
Utilities. I, I don't ever, I don't believe that was the intention of the voters, I, I think the voters, the voters voted to, to pay for an event center, the building of, of an event center. And so, and, and then you say that you've got other sources of, of revenue, I, that's probably the money made off the fire, so that gives you some wiggle room. I, if, what I would probably do is I'd want to look at that and, and maybe reallocate the, the money that you used out of the fund wrongly, you know, it happens.
I wouldn't say wrongly, it's, I would say that we used it out of necessity.
I know, I know, but, but necessity is, necessity is not an excuse for breaking the law, so I'm just, so what we want to do is just fix it. You just, just, just move it over back into the original account.
I get that.
Problem solved.
But it says, it says, I was in on it, the thing, we went, had five town hall meetings, and it, it said, it was explained to everybody, everybody knew in the countless hours of discussions when you're bored, not doing anything else, till two o'clock in the morning, having discussions about what is it for and how is it done? And it's, it's used for the facilities, and I know there's a lot of other sharegrounds and stuff that have TLT money, and they even use it for payroll and stuff, and we're, we're, that's not what we're doing to do that. This was something you needed to get done, we've already sat down and that's what you have to move to our, doing redoing the budget allocation thing. And we're taking that money out, putting it back where it's supposed to be to do that, so there's no more money coming out.
Yeah, I'm no expert, I just look, I mean, that's why I wanted to move it back to the original way that it was set up. Because, because you were locking, you were locking all funds up for the foreseeable future under that, a- and also the county had cut itself in for a bigger share of the profits, and, and that wasn't what the voters intended either.
Exactly, and, and the voters, I think the voters of the county have a special attachment to the fairground, and they can see how long we've been struggling to, you know, survive enough sweat and blood of volunteers.
I also think it's hard when you can't get a pretty good of how much you have in your account, or know what your, where your account is getting in.
Well, trust me, I, I agree.
Well, I can't agree, I cannot agree anymore on that.
Not know when you have a deposit that shows that you're supposed to have those TLT funds somewhere, that it doesn't match the deposit that is in the account.
Well, well, and, and that, we put a new financial policy in place to address those issues, and you're, you're right, you're, I can't, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
I mean, just coming in and looking at all of this stuff, I just, you know.
Even be, even before they did that, there was no require, there was no line, we didn't have a line item that explained TLT, so we said, we need to track this so we know where it's at to go. We're doing as responsibly as you can get it done and, and get it, and have it. It is that, and people, they knew that it's just the little things that we needed to get done and help to say, it was like, when we had, rain came one day and a whole wire blew up all of a sudden, it's like, so we have a lot of things to get fixed. But our goal, this stuff is, like I said, ninety-nine point ninety-five, I would say, is all going for getting that stuff done, that plan. And it's going, it's being, and you'll see that in the revised things come up where it's tracking what it's pulling up out, so it's not going to be useful without.
And, okay, so I'm going to move forward to another topic here that I've been contacted about. Why, why is the fair board planning to remove the stables? Because I've been contacted by some folks that really wanted to take advantage of the stables. And it seems to be in direct conflict with the current published strategic plan. Is it?
A strategic plan is, is something, I mean, we're talking about, it's something that you look over to see where your vision goes and where you're at. It's just recommended that we do it every eighteen months, two years, we kind of like to look at it every year. That stables was a process for years, there was a number of public meetings on it, we had horse people there talking about it, and we discussed what we need to get done to make it, and it was not viable. It was, it was not a smart business decision to, to keep it open to do that, because we were getting fifty dollars a stall. And when a horse chewed through a board that at the time was costing a hundred and twenty dollars, that's doing very well. And also with our strategic plan, if you look at it, it's also, it's in there that we acquire an off-site location for doing barns and a horse stable. Ideally, it would be really cool if they could track this, not use that school, they haven't decided to want to do that. Then we can incorporate that, then you even have a track that the horses could walk around and do this. But it does say in the plan, off-site horse stable. So it was the best fit, the building was in disrepair.
I think you said last night, there was also a policy that limited your ability to raise the.
Yeah, we couldn't raise our rates, we could raise like five dollars a year, so then in about a hundred years, we.
And you could only raise it, you could only raise it once a year?
Once a year.
Is that, is that our, is that because it's our county rate policy? Is that, or is it?
Yeah, well, I have to admit, I was told when I first got into thing that's what it is.
Because that, because that can be, that's a problem for, for a lot of our internal charges, but that's why, I mean, I can understand where, where, you know, having a facility like that is, is problematic for a public entity that's, that's limited by, by these rules. Because, you know, I mean, the public is, the public is really in, in, inclined to keep people like counties from raising their rates six times a year, right? And so that's why we have those rates, but, but if those things are laid on top of the thing that's actually a, a commercial business that's in competition, then all of a sudden, you're, you're putting it in a really bad position.
At the time, the stables, it was really for, for eight for kids, that were, we had horses. We had no kids that had any horses to do this, so that's why the rates were so cheap to help the kids out, I would assume that's a reason.
Yeah, I think that's what.
And then now, in the last few years, there are a number of private horse boarding places that do this. So now we're not in competition with them, but it's, you just can't do it, and then it throw on top of that, it gives you a big amount of liability. And insurance liability and all that stuff to do that, all have to do, somebody walk up to that stable, turn around, and horse kicks him, and that parent's not going to care who it is, because they're going to go after everyone. So there was a lot of things doing it, there was a lot of discussion on it, and it.
There's only limited use of the arena, you've got horses nearby, they're going to be wanting to ride in the arena, and, and it's going to be a liability.
Yeah, and they wanted to ride in the arena too, we said, no, you can't ride in the arena.
Right.
So, and I'll, I'll just keep moving through this, so when I looked at the credit card stuff, I saw a lot of, there were a lot of purchases for like kitchen stuff. So what, what is, what's the fair board's plan with the kitchen facilities? Because there was a lot of funds being spent on, on that stuff.
It's in the master plan, to develop a commercial grade kitchen, and that's what we done. And we've done it for far less than the, the estimated expense. We're probably at fifty percent what the estimated expense was due.
Is friends helping with that too, or something?
Well, they, they bought the, they bought the walk-in, the walk-in, they paid for that to do that. We're, hopefully we're seeking funds from them, so they could help out with some of the other kitchen stuff. But that's decisions they're making, and that's been put to them, say, hey, you know, you have some funds that's supposed to be able to do, what is that?
Did you, did you get building permits and kind of inspections?
We didn't do anything that was other than cosmetic, there was like sheet rock that was messed up and it had a little bit of rottenness.
I guess the big, the big things that would require is, did you, did you install a hood? An anthill system?
Nope.
A three compartment sink?
We had, we had.
That would require an inspection.
We have, we had an inspector come in.
And a grease trap.
Grease trap's been in there.
Okay, so those were existing.
Yeah, everything was existing.
Just the, just the, the putting in a.
Just put in, the equipment was. So we took out cafeteria style, kitchen style, vermicah counters, and put in stainless tables that could be a commercial grade. And everything that's in there right now, when we get down to the point where we're building Doshia as part of the convention center, put out, put right back in. So it's nothing that's done, it could have.
No modifications.
No modifications.
Just upgrades.
Just upgrades, and so we took out the thing and put a stainless steel in, and now somebody can do a cannon business in there. One thing I would like to see to do is if we get one of the colleges to do services, culinary school type deal, that they can come in and do things and do, and learn and train front of the house, back of the house, all that stuff. So that's what that was set up for, and that was in the strategic plan, that was in the master plan, that that be set up as a commercial grade kitchen, so it's a source of income. And when people come to the thing, a lot of them like to have catered events, and if they bring catering, do you have a kitchen? Yes, we do. Okay, now we'll plan up and rent the facility. So, but yeah, that was, that was all that was meant for.
Alright, so that's, those are my questions on that legit item.
Cool. So that's two down out of four. It's been two hours, do we want to take a ten minute break? Or not?
What are the other items? Doesn't matter to me.
Power through. Power, okay. So we are now to A, which would be distinction of fairgrounds and event center, because we, we swapped A, see? Okay, so. This was one that I think I was alluding to at the first fair meeting, and then Bobby New and I have had a conversation about this ongoing a little bit, just the, so as, as the designation for the TLT funds were designed for the event center in, in form. However, what's never been defined is what constitutes the event center. Now, my understanding, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but initially, the fairgrounds declared essentially a rebranding as the event center. At the beach. As a marketing tool. And so, you know, I, I, I think there's some misconceptions, because the public and some other people that I've talked to, when they hear event center, they think Doshia Hall and the, the new showcase building and, right, and the development of that, essentially a convention area as the event center. However, I think there's, we just need to clear up what that means between the commissioners and the fair boards, so that the taxpayers know what those TLT dollars are really designated towards.
It's, to, to me, it's the entire facility, because you, if you have a big enough event, you have Doshia, and then you have showcase, then you have floor event. And then you can bring in rigging and stuff and put them in the arena, and you have it on underground, so it's at the event center. You have an, we have an outdoor, it would be cool to have an outdoor constant series, because Ashland started very small, I would think. And that would be at the event center beach, and where would that be? Inside the arena, outside the outside stage, just the facilities and grounds and everything is all part of it.
It's anonymous, fairgrounds and event.
And even, and even in sense, when we put our claims in for a thing, at the heading of the claims, it says, event center, well, abbreviates the initials, event center on the beach, when you put in the kind of things, whatever we're putting in to do it, so.
Was that like an economic development kind of thing?
Yeah, it was, it was, at the time, my understanding was because when. First they were trying to see if they can do, we're trying to get funding, because people were more interested in supporting, when people look for marketing, like an event, and ooh, that's a big thing to do that. We go up to Portland, hey, bring your people down here to fairgrounds. Well, there's a connotation with fairgrounds that is like, blase boring, but if you, every fairgrounds, you go, all their buildings is part of the whole facility, so they have their event center there. So, hey, come to the event center on the beach down here in Gold Beach, Curry County, Oregon, oh, that sounds pretty cool. So it, it was a marketing thing, it's one of the things, to me it's no different than salmon has a scientific name, and it's a Chinook. It's the same thing, or.
Well, either name, given name.
All the fairgrounds around the state of Oregon are like Jackson County Fairgrounds and Event Center.
Yeah, it's a plural.
Or Jackson County Event Center. You know, it's fair and event center, it's kind of a one and the same.
Right, so I think, I think the, the key would be to come to an agreed upon definition of what the event center is. And, and, and most of the public that I talked to, I mean, forthright is, and something that I've even brought to, to you is, you know, the, I think, the, one of the best case potential uses, right, is to leverage your TLT funds to get a bond, large enough to fix the facilities in general, your entire events, right? So, and that, that seems to be the, you know, the most, the most agreed upon direction, I think, for a lot of the dollars being used. Instead of trying to nickel and dime it each year with little upgrades here and little upgrades there, that you really aren't going to be able to keep up with.
No, you look like our capital, we're talking about twenty-nine for the convention center to get done. If we had something where to do it. Then that, there's no question where TLT is going. It's going to fund this, and it's understanding, and once again, we could, the, the, the great success about when that TLT got passed, got by, passed by, by hair under, fifteen percent majority. Almost thirty-three hundred citizens said yes to do it, and why? Because it wasn't a tax burden on them to do it, our residents do it enough. So if we can go, now we can sell, well, a bond, now we're going, oh, the bond's being funded by this. There's another, so fairgrounds have, they have took the entire TLT money to fund their bond, and they were able to get them, so we can be useful and move along, be self-sufficient.
Yeah, no, I, I've done a lot of research, I think Lincoln County used a portion of theirs to do a bond, and it was, it had sunset clause on their fairgrounds portion that identified that it would, once the bond was, was completed, then the TLT money would then be turned back to the county for future use. So it was used essentially, particularly initially for that bond purpose. And so are you, I mean, we're, how many years into the TLT, are you guys, do you have a, do you have a bond proposal? Are you prepared?
That, that's part of the stuff that we're working with Civil West and everything, so we can get that architectural design of the event center, and it's going to be a digital paper one to do that. We have a slide through, we can see what it is, and we can use that as a marketing tool to say, it's exactly the same thing we did when we went out and marketed the TLT. We had PowerPoint presentations, so people want to see something, say, oh, I hear that.
So I guess what I'm getting at.
But yeah, but no, as far as a bond set, not, yeah.
Because the, the thing is, is you're using TLT funds currently to pay for that Civil West engineering, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
So, however, if, I guess in hindsight, if that would have initially been leveraged towards a bond, the bond would be paying for Civil West and. towards a bond, the bond would be paying for Civil West and the rest of the project. So now, we're kind of caught up using a lot of that bond money for the bits and pieces as opposed to the larger scope, so.
But then you don't have anything to show anybody when they're trying to.
But I guess, I guess my question is if the intent is, so you have enough TLT money to go get a pretty substantial bond right now.
Yeah.
So if the intent is to go get the bond, then wouldn't it be the best use of money and time to say, okay, let's just stop. Let's stop doing all this little stuff. Let's secure this bond and build this amazing facility for this county?
Well, so far, a lot of stuff that we have in place now, it's the requirement, like when you look at the vegetation lines, all the water people, everybody, all that stuff's been met now. We have all that stuff, that's been done. So when we go to the bond, it's in place. We know what EPA says, we know what these people say, we know what this, we have our surveys and elevations, we have it done. No, I agree.
But I guess my question is, like, we're talking about like a thirty-year lease or on a piece of property, or, you know, the sewer lines, you know, potentially having to move stuff. It would seem like we would want to hold off on that, secure the bond, and then.
Well, the bond was just spoke about or suggested about when Jay was brought in on the BOC.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, that's really fresh.
Okay.
And it's just been a BOC.
And my question is, is that now being legitimately discussed? Is that like something that is?
We're just trying to put it together right now. I was talking to Jay about it, and we said, I was talking to Chris, we haven't had, we spend a lot of time trying to satisfy some of the stuff that you were looking for, to make sure that it's done, so we can go back to folks and all this stuff that we need to get. As far as stuff with the lease and everything, it is in there in mind that that will be the part of it, and it won't affect anything else going on there, because that whole field down below is still going to be a carnival ground. And then when it's not carnival, it'd be additional parking or event type things where you can, like do a big charity, whatever you want, it can be used for that stuff to get it done.
You kind of got, you kind of got like a home run set up, in my opinion, right? You can leverage the TLT dollars towards the bond. You can fix your, you can fix your, we can actually build the infrastructure that's so important. And then you also now created a new revenue stream, potentially with an RV park that can then maintain the facility, right? So you have a good working apparatus, but you got to get that one heavy lift to get, instead of trying to, instead of trying to do this over a twenty-year period of fix this, fix that roof, let's do this, let's repair that wall, just to, you know, a bang and get it over with, pay for it over time, use the money to maintain the fair, or pay for it, the fairgrounds, whatever the case is.
Also, the percentage of TLT funds that you are currently using to fund operations will limit the amount of money that will be able to be committed for the bond. So the less you can do that now, the more you can say, this is how much money we're getting for TLT funds, and they'll give you one lump of money. But in doing that, you really need to have fiscal controls over, you have to have limits that say, we're not going, you know, we're not allowed to use TLT funds for this stuff. Otherwise, nobody's going to write you the loan.
Right. And that's the whole thing, is to come out, the thought is to come out, and that's the whole purpose of the RV park. Because one of the questions was, did we speak with stakeholders? It's in the original street to find that stakeholders were interviewed and do this, and this is an idea. And when we were looking at it during the busy season, all our RV parks in there are full of capacity. This will be an increased dollar, people can feel, oh, there's more room to do that. And it will fund those stuff where we can do, pay the utilities, the sewer, the water, an employee, maybe we can have two guys so you don't kill the guy out there running around trying to do the whole thing. I mean, that's a lot of work to keep that done. And it's the thing, and I think it's all the people that had the dream, the volunteers that kept it together, the citizens that helped put together the TLT stuff and fight for to get it done. I think it'd be, it's a pat on the back and a thank you to them, say, look, here's where your work is paying off now. And I don't want to see this thing where I'm crawling around in a freaking wheelchair when it finally gets done, make sure, yeah, ADA access, so I can use the convention center. But yeah, no, and that's the most efficient way, and again, it doesn't cost the residents of Curry County any money, because it's being taken care of that way. And I guess would be a way to do it, and that's a stricter idea, and we, you know, we're on the same page as that, so.
Grand slam.
Yeah, I mean, it's a no-brainer thing. We're just trying to make sure we have, we've done our due diligence and put it where hockey dip, well, we're ready now to be successful.
Yeah, you just got to make sure that you don't have like five grand here for this coming out of there, or, you know what I mean? All those little tiny things start to add up and really limit your access to how much you can get.
Right.
So really protect those funds and move forward with that, and then you're going to have legacy. Right, then it's a legacy. So, so, so really, yeah, that's what I would caution.
I think you'll notice that when we spend a new budget, when we redo the budget, is reflected in the info that we got that we're using this one. Pull that out and take care of that way. I mean, it's up to the board, it's considering what we're, how we're going to do that, working one together, but I think, yeah, I mean, we're on the same page as that, and I think that's, I think that's for the entire.
Okay, moving on, we're going to go to D, Strategic Plan slash Redevelopment Plan. So you've got a strategic plan.
Yes.
We've got a copy of it.
We started that in two thousand seventeen. We're in the D guys, we're there to do that. Got a strategic plan, of course, probably prices are a little different now.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we went paying like nine dollars sheet of plywood for it to a hundred and fifty dollars sheet of plywood, if you can get it, type of deal. Fortunately, those numbers have come down. But the gist of everything is still on target, and we looked at that, and I have it here, there's a number of things that we've gotten done on our master plan stuff and our strategic plan for the fards repairs and get stuff done. Kitchen was a big one to get that, we checked that off our list to do that. Showcase was on there. Basically, we didn't do any of the showcase, and you can have the road department come and use it for landfill, because it was, you could stick your finger through the siding of the building. It was supposed to be painted, when the guy put the paint roller on it, it went through the wall.
Wow.
So you had to do this. But these things are just, you have to do it. Recently, we just had the HVAC system for OSU went out. So you have to take care of it, there you go. If we don't have to do that stuff and put all the, that would be the goal. And if that's in the strategic plan, we had to repair this and do that. And the only thing is, is when we mentioned about the horse barn, is that we hadn't put it to paper, yet horse barn's still in there as far as the office site, which, because we actually do have land to the west of the track that belongs to the fairgrounds. So we can go, of course, you can't use that side, it's for camping now, apparently, that we don't get any money for some of the spots.
So, I know we moved on before, but I think the one thing that we didn't get quite addressed is the definition. Yeah, the definition of the event center. So, and I don't think that's one thing we're going to probably come to an agreement upon tonight, because we can't exactly say that the entire grounds is considered the event center, because that would then include the RV park, which is going to be a pay-for-plant. So it can't essentially probably be the OSU extension building, because that's also a different rental pay-for-plant, right? We're not going to call probably your garden center the event center, because they're, you know what I'm saying? So I think we're going to have to really designate.
Wrap up all of the land.
Exactly, and that then becomes the premise of our, the TLT dollars being designated towards the bond improvement of those specific areas. So that it's very transparent for, so my, maybe a suggestion would be that, you know, essentially, one of us works with somebody on the board to identify what that looks like, and maybe it's Ted working with Chris to identify what those look like, and then we come back at a later date. And then we actually just define, put it in definition, the event center comprises of X. So then we're very clear.
Yeah, because it's outdoor, indoor is the same thing, we do that map it off. All the rest of the facilities would be part of it to get it all done, I would see. And then keep in mind too, is the farthest transparency, even when the TLT process is going, it was stated, event center, fairgrounds, it's all the same thing, everything's done, event center, it's tied, and everywhere you go, the papers, the files, the.
I think what I read, it said the event center at the fairgrounds, which incorporates that there's two different entities, right?
Well, it says, it says.
It says the event center on the beach provides a venue for year-round events, is what it says.
Okay.
And then it has here where it says, so the allocated decree county fair friends, comma, event center count, so it's intermingled.
And the ORS definition of fairgrounds is a place where you have events.
Yes.
So they're just, it just works either way.
But with the development of different certain aspects that we.
Well, I think you got a legitimate point, like with the OSU building and things that are, that are, you know, different kind of developments. I think, I think for purpose of getting a bond, I think you want to be really clear about what's committed to. Because you're going to, they're going to want to hold you to the terms that you apply for.
The gold marker, but roll around that on that.
Well, OSU building has a room on top of it that we actually ran out for space too. So the whole building is not designated just solely for OSU.
OSU doesn't have a fairground. It's part of the fairgrounds. We don't need to make it.
It's.
I'm just saying that there's some rental income that's made off that top story. It's just not solely OSU rented out. They just rented the first floor.
But.
Right, because it has separate entrance, outside staircase that goes up.
So regardless, I think, so, 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 the county's in charge of the buildings. The county owns the buildings. The county has the right to define the buildings.
No arguing with your rights, sir.
So I just, so I would, I would like to just say that maybe, could we have Ted work with Chris on what that looks like?
Sure. I mean, the way I would only be doing it for the purposes of defining what you're going to be trying to capitalize, you know?
For the bond.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully that will finally make a clarifier.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Because it's a common name, legal name.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's all right.
We're winding down.
No, my questions are answered, and again, the whole purpose of this is how do we make an appointment? Who do we appoint? What's it look like? And this information is helpful to, we can't make a decision tonight, but it's helpful to me to know what direction I want to go with, so. That's all I have.
Likewise, Jay? Ted?
I just want to revisit, I have one more thing.
Okay, that's fine.
So I think it would be great to meet with, I don't know, with a financial person, financial, maybe they have a financial, or talk to somebody at Lane County to understand all of this mess.
Yeah, well, you can meet, you can meet with me, and we'll go, we'll go over it, and we can, and it's complicated and.
What part are you talking about specifically?
She's talking about the fact that she can't, she can't figure out.
That we don't have a balance, we don't know how much is in the account. I, we don't, I.
Yeah.
We don't know, like, this states that this money is here should be in the account in this amount, and there's no, I mean, these are totally different amounts that are on this, we're trying to allotting out.
Yeah.
You can meet with Ted and the commissioner, a, you know, a commissioner, and then he can go.
Yeah, we can do that.
Until they dispersed us, and then.
Yeah, we can do that.
And we can go over the, basically, what we've got with the new, so, and what I said at the other meeting was that we were trying to, we're upgrading the, our computer system, our software system, so that every department has it, and I had said that I'd want, I wanted the fair to be, to have Casell as well, because that's our main accounting system. We're going to be able to do budgeting and everything. Right now, the way, the way that it's set up, we've had, we've had different random budget software that was brought in by different random financial directors who didn't, who didn't stay, and no one mastered that program. And so, that's why we reached out to Lane Council of Governments and brought them down and had them look at our, at our scenario. They, they had the exact same reaction that you just gave, except they were a lot more upset. And they said, that, they said that this was, I think the word used was horrendous, never seen anything this bad. We could not expect to hire a finance director now, because no normal person could do that job, because it's impossible to do. So what we're doing, that's why we're starting with the policies that we sent Chris, that's an interim, that's an interim policy. We're going to, we're having all of our financial policies rewritten with ElCog, and that's part of what we're doing, because our finances are in such disarray that ElCog and others had been concerned that we might lose our federal funds, which would then, you know, we'd lose the ability to get grants. It's a huge problem. So we're taking every step that has been recommended to us to, to be able to, our first, our first problem was getting control of cash. We don't, we don't have any controls on cash. We used to, not, about five years ago, apparently, they sort of departed from the old method where deposits were made every day and it was trackable. That's, that's how we ended up with that, which is unconscionable, and in fact, I recommended to the budget committee that they not sign off on the budget, because I wouldn't have. You know, we didn't know how much money we had.
The answer to your question is, we've changed our policy, we've changed our procedures. Those are new and in place, and we're working through that, and we'll help you work through that.
Except you still won't be happy, because we're working through it.
Where we are is unacceptable.
But we're, we're getting through it, we are.
We're making headway, that is good. And then we'll have, we'll have the new policies in place. We have, we hope to have all those policies in place by February first, and then our, all the software and everybody trained.